To bring to order the January tenth meeting of the Tiverton Town Council. We don't have a flag, but let's.
Chris has got one.
Chris does.
All right. Ready, guys? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I want to welcome everyone. And for the people who are watching, this is our first time on Zoom in almost a year, so we may be a little rusty. So have patience with us, please. Approval of town council minutes, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one reckless session, Council Perry abstains, absent. December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one executive session, Council Perry abstains, absent. November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. Um, special session, Councilor DeMadera abstains, absent. Acknowledged receipts and minutes from the boards and commissions and committees, Recreation Commission two. Acknowledged receipt of reports, town administrator, department's monthly reports, December twenty twenty-one. Police and fire overtime reports, uh, December twenty twenty-one. Uh, treasurer Shavett, November twenty twenty-one budget and revenue reports. Acknowledged receipt of correspondence.
Who keeps doing that?
Yeah, it's me and I don't know why. I'm trying to fix it. Okay.
Put her under a mattress.
Tell us, no, I fixed it. Town of Smithfield School Committee Resolution, changes to Rhode Island General Law. Sixteen dash seventy dash forty C and D, Town of Cumberland School Committee Resolution. Change to Rhode Island General Law sixteen seventy forty C and D Newport. Discover Newport Annual Audit Reports for years ending June twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty. Uh, Town of Lincoln Town Council Resolution request to Governor Daniel McGee and the General Assembly to increase the number of basic police training academies. Let it to counsel from Nancy Papagano regarding short-term rentals and approval of tax assessor abatement. Uh, ten thousand two hundred and one dollars and thirty-eight cents. Would anyone like to take anything from the um, agenda?
I would. I would like to um, pull and move uh, this letter to when we discuss short-term rentals.
What are you talking about?
D five.
D five, yeah.
Okay, so um, is that a motion, Donna?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move that to uh, the discussion on the short-term rental.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor, Councilor Burke?
Hi.
Council Viera?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Hi.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Um, I uh, anyone else?
Council DeMadera, how about you?
Yes, yes. Anyone else would like to take from the um, consent agenda?
I have a few items.
Go ahead, Mike.
Um, item A three, November twenty-ninth special um, session minutes of the council. Item C one, town administrator, department's monthly reports for December of twenty-one. Item, items D one and D two, they're both school committee resolutions changing R I G L sixteen seven forty. C and D, one from the town of Smithfield, one of the, from the town of Cumberland. Item D four, the town of Lincoln Town Council Resolution requesting the governor and the assembly to increase the number of basic police training academies and item E, will approval of tax assessor base abatements.
Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the rest of the agenda without what Mike just said.
I'm moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor, Council Burke?
Yes.
Council Viera?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Council Burke?
So item A three, it's the minutes from the um, solar ordinance hearing. And um, Madam Clerk, if we can look at the last page. Um, the first full paragraph that starts Ms. Kate Kate Noda from Echo G Energy.
Yep.
Um, I just wanna, if we can, I believe my comment also included to her uh, the importance of them finding an effective mechanism um, to cover the full decommissioning um, costs. Uh, cause I don't wanna see if we would to, were to approve anything like um, what she's asking for. I would not wanna see scars like I can see often when I go back home in Pennsylvania from strip mines, which I know are very different, but. So that's that piece. And then see one. Chris, um, more a question, and I don't know if you've talked with the, this is on the first page, the senior senate director. Have they modified anything with the latest rise in COVID cases, especially around congregation meals and um, are there any concerns in regard to that?
Oh, I don't believe there's been any change in what we've been doing. I think that they're just being overly cautious about cleaning, but they're still providing the services. I think they're just being very diligent about the cleanings and that people are very cognizant there of COVID overall, and I've been very good about. You know, they, they want the services to still continue. I, I think that there isn't a push right now to limit the access. Um, if it gets worse, we may consider that.
Thank you. Item um, D one and D two really go hand in hand because they're basically the same resolutions. Um, I know they're from school committees, but I'm wondering if this council would like to consider, and I know we couldn't do it at this meeting, a similar resolution because it would increase the um, it's requesting that the formula for state housing uh, ratio be increased by five percent. Um, and there's certain dates in here and you know, uh, sunset dates, but basically extending the sunset date on construction projects that are commenced by uh, December thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. The, to a new sunset date of twenty-seven, there's some caveats around the general bond obligation being approved. And then for um, also for construction projects um, devoted to the enhancement of early learning and technical centers, similar date frame and um, and caveats around uh, general obligation bond improvements on the ballot. So, you know, it's really, I guess, just a sense of the council, if we wanna spend any time or energy on this. If so, I'm happy to work with this solicitor.
Any discussion?
I, I, I hear like a conversation, like, like someone's talking somewhere. Can you hear it?
Yes.
It's like a TV or something.
Not my house. Oh, it stopped.
There's nobody here down hall.
You sure you're not having a potty class?
Yeah, yeah.
Donna, I think it stopped.
No, I, I hear it once in a while too. I'm just not sure how to control it.
We can, you can, we can mute everybody who's an attendee. There you go. Is that better? Donna, is that good?
I, yeah, I think so. I don't think I hear it now. It was very annoying.
So is there any discussion on the school committee resolution and whether or not we want to participate in this?
I don't think I know enough about it.
Well, it's there, they're in front of you, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
And it's not, and it's not suggesting we vote on them tonight, because it's not on the agenda to vote on them. It's when we wanna spend any time or energy to look at them in detail.
Yeah, Mike, I um, I um, I do agree with you. I will support it. That we need to um, write a resolution. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it though. Anybody?
Can we, can we write one just say we support theirs?
Yeah, we can copy theirs quite frankly.
Yeah, it's, it's really a cut and paste.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I thought that's the way you did it.
We're, we're not voting on tonight. We're just saying should be, even think about it for a future.
Oh, I think we should think about it, yeah.
Alright, so I'll work with Mike on that.
I can still hear the TV.
Yeah, there's still that chatter in the background.
Let me see if my wife's got TV on the other, even though I got two doors shut to the windows.
Yeah, there's no way you would hear that.
Yeah, it shouldn't be, because, but um.
I just feel like they had a radio in the kitchen. I set it off and it's not that. I think Jay just found the problem.
That's, that though, if he has his headphones, then you shouldn't hear that, but.
He doesn't hear it.
Yeah.
Unless he, I, I know what it is. He probably has noise cancelling headphones, or he may not. And if he does, there, he's got the pass through, so you can still hear the noise.
Is it gone?
Yeah.
That might have been her.
Jay, Jay, I'll, I'll teach you about how you can, I think it's your headphones are on um, noise pass through, so the noise passes through instead of it um, being canceled, so out the ambient noise could be heard.
Alright.
But, um, and then item D four, um, similar, this is a town of, this is a resolution related to um, requesting that the governor and um, the General Assembly consider um, having the Department of Public Safety have more municipal police training academies. Right now, they only have two. I know uh, we ran into a situation, I think at our last meeting where the chief came to us to um, talk about some challenges that that creates. Um, so I would, you know, again, if we are interested, you know, I'd ask just that I'd work with Mike to put something together that we can look at at a future meeting.
This has been a problem for years.
I support that. I can see Bill shaking his head, yes.
Alright, so Mike and I have our homework cut out for, it's, it's, again, it's really pretty much a cut and paste um, for that. Um, and then the last item, I see Dave Robert is there, so if you, Chris can let Dave in, I just have um, a couple, they're really educational questions for me.
Um. Dave, you here?
He's here.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes. Okay, now we can.
So, Dave, my questions are on two on the second page of your report. One is uh, I guess it's parcel twenty-one, one twelve, um, the Lamoths. It says market value adjustment for seasonal property on leased land. Can you help me understand why there is such an adjustment for seasonal property?
Um, actually, the, the, the word in seasonal property probably shouldn't have been there only for the fact that this is a year-round residence. Um, but it isn't a, a leased land development that uh, some of those properties over there are seasonal. And because they're seasonal and there's limited road access and um, you know, it's a dirt road and such going back there, um, and they don't own the land itself. Um, we made an adjustment because it was being factored as if it, they did own the land.
So is this, this is on Stafford pot?
Correct.
Right, but that land, I know what development does that is. The people own the houses, right, Dave? But they rent the land?
Correct.
Okay.
So, so the adjustment is really on the fact that they lease the land, not own?
Not own it, correct.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. Um, and then the um, twenty-one, one fourteen, um, Burns and Salvador, the land adjustment for corner traffic influence, just, I'm just looking for an explanation of why there and not in other places, or do we do that in other places too?
Uh, we do do it on other places. Uh, this one here, anything along Main Road has a uh, traffic influence factor on the land. Uh, this one here is a corner, um, so there's more of a detriment to market value because it is on a corner um, on Main and Sappowick.
Yeah, it's right across from Lafayette too.
Correct.
Okay, alright, that's all. Thanks.
You're welcome.
So, Madam President, I would make a motion to accept the consent agenda items, um, A three, A C one, D one, D two, D four, and E.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made seconded by, I'll give it to Council Edwards right now. Um, all those in favor, Council Burke?
Yes.
Council Viera?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Public dot uh, comments regarding um, in um, council agenda items or other town business. Does anyone in the participant room have any public comments? I know a couple of you did, and we've already addressed that, and we're gonna deal with it during the um, during the agenda. Anyone else? If so, Renee Jones is there. Chris, you wanna bring her in?
Hang on, I'll find her.
There she is. Renee, you with us?
I can hear you.
Yep. Okay, we can hear you too. Um, okay. Go ahead.
Well, um, Happy New Year, everybody. Um, I just wanted to um, refer to a letter that I wrote to the town council based on item number ten on the closed executive session. Um, I wanna read the letter, so um, I'm gonna just go ahead with that. The Economic Development Commission in action, item nine in the Tiverton Comprehensive Community Plan. This task to partner with state and local agencies, including Commerce Rhode Island, Newport County Chamber of Commerce, to assist with marketing, available space, to maximize the economic opportunities of the Tiverton, Tiverton Business Park. In addition, the town charter says the EDC is also tasked to assist in the search for and attraction of businesses, which would be consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. Um, since late summer, the Tiverton Economic Development Commission has been working with Commerce Rhode Island, Newport County Chamber of Commerce, Decorator Newport, Grow Smart Rhode Island, and other state experts to assess the current status and development needs for the business park. As you know, the result of these conversations was the site readiness grant submitted by the town twelve-seven to the Commerce Rhode Island to evaluate the build-out considerations for the park. If granted, this would enable the town to approach development and developers with a better understanding of what is needed to establish a viable and beneficial asset for the town of Tiverton. Um, when I learned November eighth that there was interest in the business park by a developer, I requested to attend meetings where the project was being discussed, fully aware that matters would need initially to be kept confidential. I was advised that developer requested only the town council and administrator be present. Um, I feel that the developer should not be setting the rules as to who should be attending meetings on their proposal to buy the town's business park. Um, at this time, judging from the agenda, the town council is about to sign a letter of intent to sell the entire business park, which much surely become public since it involves a significant town asset. The current lack of information does not enable the town Economic Development Commission to carry out one of its primary functions in the town. Um, the Economic Development Commission needs to be part of this process and consideration should also be given to allow outside experts to review the proposed plan. Um, and so I was requesting that since this town meeting is a virtual one, it is simply a matter of providing a link to provide the representative from the EDC to attend this executive session. And that's.
Renee, I will address this. Um, we go into executives quite often with businesses who have proposals. They ask that we do not include anyone but, but, but the town council. And that's due to, they don't want anyone to know what, they don't want other businesses to see what they're doing and come in and offer a counterproposal. Um, this, this is a past practice, uh, what we are discussing it tonight, but we are not making me, uh, the final decision tonight. This will be vented through zoning, this will be vented through planning. At some point, the economic development will certainly have a say in this. But at this point in negotiations, this is a very common practice, and the town council does it alone. And, and it's the request of the businesses, and they have every right, and if Mike Marcello wants to come in on this, but they have every right to ask that it's just done an executive with the seven of us.
Have you all signed, have you all signed like what they call the NDA, um, those NDAs, you know?
No, we have not.
Okay, so that, for example, I'm just questioning because I, I mean, if you have to keep it.
I, I don't feel at this point that it would be wise to let anyone else in on this, uh, but I was, um, Gibby. Sorry, guys. Come here. I, I think at this point, this is the way that we've done it, and at some point, of course, um, everyone's going to have an opinion and they're gonna be able to express that. Um, this is a long process. This is certainly not the final phase of it. And we are still really early in the negotiations with this.
Um, I just want, I'm just gonna keep, I'm just gonna keep, I will keep bringing it up just because it's one, one of the things that sort of does it um, include the EDC. It's right there in the um, um, element nine, like I said, I'm supposed to be working with the town planner and the administrator, um, or the EDC is, is tasked to do that. So I will just keep bringing it up. I, I, I certainly understand, um, you know, wanting to keep confidential, but I actually can keep my mouth shut as well, so.
Well, at some point, Renee, um, we, we, we've been more, more than willing, and I think I speak for the council to have your participation. But right now, we're very um, in the early stages.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Did anybody wanna say anything besides me?
No, I, I concur, and, and Counselor Solicitor Marcello, I would assume that in your work with other municipalities, it's the same, similar type of process that is used.
This is just really uh, Tony down for a letter of intent. We're not any, you know, it's, it's a lot of benchmarks that have been met before the actual project, if it even goes forward, goes forward, so. At the appropriate time, at the appropriate time, um, there'll be more public information and there'll be more public input at this point.
Can I ask a question? What letter and, what the letter intent, just what a letter of intent is then?
So it's basically saying, um, we're interested in the project, we need to do X, Y, and Z, we're, uh, and we're hoping that while we're doing X, Y, and Z, that you do not sell the property or market the property to anybody else.
So they're, they're basically saying, put it on hold for anybody else?
Yes.
Okay.
But that, and that's normal, when you're buying a house, that's normal too.
Well, I, I'm just, that was just for information. I just wasn't sure about that, so I wanted to make sure I understood it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, anyone else in the participant, uh, the attendees would like to speak, please raise your hand. Um, for those listening, anyone that would like to dial in, Chris, do you have those numbers?
Do. But we're not at a public hearing, but it's.
No, but even this for public comments, so if someone's listening and would like to say something.
So eight seven seven eight five three five two four seven. The meeting ID number is eight one four six six eight eight three zero eight three. And the passcode is zero four two four two nine. And all that is published on the town's website. So if anybody had a comment that they'd like to do, they could do it now.
I don't remember if I'd done this before, but it is true. If somebody's listening, they can dial in.
They can. And so again, it's eight seven seven eight five three five two four seven.
So Chris, technical question, um, because I've not dealt with this. So if I'm sitting there on my computer in the audience, I can raise my hand. But if we have people on their phones, how do we know if they wanna talk?
Oh, it's star, um, star six, star nine. Star nine.
Star nine?
Star six gets you the hand up, star nine takes it down.
Okay, thank you. And you may have said that, and I may have missed it, sorry.
Okay.
Right, so it doesn't look like we have anybody?
Nope.
Okay. Um, public presentation, um. Sahadi. Company asked that this be tables for the next meeting because they're not available. Um, do I need a motion to do that, Mike, or I can just move on?
I would just make, take a motion to table. That would be great.
Some.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilor Burke, a second by uh, Council Edward's to table, Mary Sahadi, Hakes Sahadi and Company P C, Presentation of Audit Report. Six thirty twenty twenty-one to the next meeting. All those in favor, uh, Council Burke?
Yes.
Council Viera?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Board of Licensing, S M N, L C C. Uh, twenty eighty-nine Stafford Road Subway, approval of Victorine license subject to meaning all legal requirements. This is just a change of ownership, and that's why we have to do this. Um, any questions from the council? Like to entertain a motion for approval?
I'm moved.
Second. Second. Uh, motion to be made by Councilor Edwards, second by Council Viera, all those in favor, Council Burke?
Yes.
Council Viera?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a cook. I'm a yes. I always said I'm a cook. Did you notice, Donna?
Yeah, I heard that.
Acknowledgment and resignations, Alfred Almeida Junior from the Personnel Board and the Cemetery Board, effective twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one. Jen Oster from the Town Farm Renovation Committee, effective twenty twenty-one. Any questions from the council? Like to entertain a motion for approval with um, with regret, and thank you for their service.
I'm moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Council Edwards, second from Council Viera. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Council Burke?
Yes.
Council Viera?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Budget Committee. I'm a little bit happy about this, guys. We finally got people to join.
It's a plus.
It's a plus. Um, the first one is, this is an eleven-member board, all-year term, three vacancies, one unexpired term to eleven seven twenty twenty-one, and two unexpired terms to eleven four twenty twenty-four. I do have a question. What terms do these people take? Do, do we fill the twenty twenty-two first?
You.
What?
I would say, I would say it's up to us. I would suggest, Madam Chair, we fill the longer-term ones first.
Alright, so I have another question.
Yeah.
And this was asked to me prior. Can someone on the board now that was given a twenty twenty-two term, ask for the twenty twenty-four term?
So you mean an unelected person, correct?
Unelected person that we, we appointed last year. Can they ask to be put on the twenty twenty-four? They're enjoying it. They wanna stay late.
So as long as they were appointed, they could, you can, yes, I, I believe that's okay. As long as they're, if they were elected, they're elected to a certain term, but if you're appointed, they can be moved over.
So that.
We have, yeah.
We have.
We have one member who wants to move to a longer term that was appointed.
That they, we can't do that tonight because it's not on the agenda, but that's something we can consider.
But can we, so can we put someone on twenty twenty-two, put someone on twenty twenty-four and save a twenty twenty-four?
Yes, you could do that as well.
Okay. Guys, I'm really sorry about the dog. Um, I'm sure you can hear him. Alright, so the first one is Todd Meacherry, Eight Bridgeport Road, we're request appointment. Hi, Todd.
Hi, how you doing?
Good. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you wanna be on the Budget Committee?
Well, I, I have a background in uh, basically uh, law enforcement. Uh, I've been in charge of day-to-day operations when I was on the uh, on the Police Department in Connecticut. But I retired in uh, two thousand and one. After that, um, in the condo association I lived in, I was uh, president of the board for uh, almost fifteen years, so. I, why I did that, I have no idea. So I um, enjoy uh, challenges. I enjoy working for people, and I also enjoy um, trying to make a difference, uh, trying to make a difference, and I love the community here. Uh, we've lived here since uh, two thousand and eighteen. And I would like to do anything to assist and help. Two thousand and eighteen, and I would like to do anything to assist and help.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Madam President?
Yes, councillor Burke?
Um, do you prefer Todd or?
I prefer Todd, but I always use my full name because that's the name my mother gave me and she'd be upset if I didn't use it.
That's okay. Um, really not a question. I, I also served, not for as long as you did. Um, so I commend you even more, uh, for about four years before we moved to Tiverton as a. President of a very large condo association. So, um, while people may not know it, it's one of the more challenging jobs. Because you are right there dealing with people's, um, living space and, um, you know, how that gets paid for and how that gets kept up. And there's often, right, you know, angry people, um, people who are impatient, um, and, and the like. So. I certainly appreciate that and certainly the budgeting aspects of that, um, you know, come into play and, and your operation of the. University Police Department too, I think is, is a very good, uh. Component for bringing you forward.
Anyone else? Thank you, Todd.
You're welcome.
Um, Erica. Hi Erica.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure. So I am, um, I have a master's in criminal forensics. I am a Realtor with Keller Williams. And also the Director of Operations for, um, the entire state of Rhode Island for.
Oops.
Oops. I am also a vice, my home, oh, sorry about that. I am also, um, the Vice President of my Horner's Association. And I currently serve as Secretary for Singing Out Against Hunger, um, the nonprofit that we run locally here. Born and raised in Tiverton, uh, left for a little bit for higher education, found my way back.
Why would you like to be on the Budget Committee, Erica?
So I'm interested in, you know, serving my community that has served me for so long. And, um, this opportunity was presented to me and for a long time I've been interested in. Becoming a little bit more involved with the town. And so I think this is a great, um, opportunity. So that's why I'm interested in.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions from the council?
I just have something to say.
Yes.
I was hoping that, um, that these new members. Understand that there's people, one came before us, Catherine Smith. Who's having trouble paying the high taxes and affording to pay her bills. And I'm hoping you keep that in mind, that it's a fair and equitable budget. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Um, both Todd and Erica, you know what a controversial budget, uh, what a controversial committee this is. Um, I commend you for wanting to join this. Uh, we've had some problems getting people to join it. Every year is, I'm going to call it a nightmare because that's what it becomes. And, um, I really appreciate that you're willing to come and serve. And I hope I didn't change your mind by saying this. But I'm sure that you both are aware of what goes on. And, um, um. I want to thank you for, um, doing this. Anyone else? Okay.
Um, well, yeah, Mike, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Jay.
Uh, well, I, I'm a former chairman of that committee.
We know Jay.
And, uh. I can tell you, it is not easy. You gotta do a lot of homework and you gotta have a thick skin. Cause you're not gonna please. Your chances of pleading almost anybody are slim to none, but. It works out in the end. So I want to thank you both for stepping forward and volunteering for this.
Well, with Todd's background, I can imagine he must have a very thick skin. And I know Erica personally, and I know she has a very thick skin.
Um, and I can't imagine what it's like to, uh. Have to analyze, uh, human and non-human remains. So that certainly.
She could do forensic accounting for us.
Might be able to, you never know. She's very talented. Um, alright, so how are we gonna do this? Are we going to appoint one for twenty twenty two term and another for twenty twenty four? Or are we going to, what, what do you feel, guys?
Well, Mr. Cherry applied first, so maybe we can give him the twenty twenty two. Term and then we have two, uh, two terms left over, right? So we can, should we decide Mr. Ruda for one of those two?
I would actually suggest, I'm gonna suggest something similar, but, um, because we have Mr. Cherry's application first. Uh, we appoint him to one of the longer terms and then, um, decide what to do with the other two terms. Madam President, what, what's the end date? Do you know for the person who, um, said they may want to extend?
And it's twenty twenty two. Can someone help?
Oh, it is twenty twenty two.
John. It's twenty twenty two, right?
Thanks.
Yeah, it's twenty twenty two.
And is he, has he talked to you about it?
I believe he talked to Chris.
Chris, what is your feeling on this?
Um, I think they're both excellent candidates and I think, uh, moving, um, the current individual to a longer term, seeing how he's. Provided, uh, a breadth of service that is, uh, commendable and the town council's been satisfied with what he's been doing. It's also commendable. Um, I, I agree that, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to either one of them. I mean. Somebody's gonna be on a short term and somebody's gonna be on a longer term, but it's, um, ultimately if. Like Jay, I was on the chair is for eighteen nineteen years. It's, it's, I'd love that committee. I thought it was a great. Uh, asset to this community, um, that provides some service that, um. I, I think if anybody who gets this even on a short term will hopefully look to reapply to, uh, get reelected for a longer term. Right? That's usually there's a breadth of service that usually happens if people like this committee. You're involved in the town's finances and every aspect of what the town does. Um, I think that you'll be enamored with it somewhat and look to whoever gets the short term will be looking to get reelected very quickly. So.
And keep in mind, last year we didn't even have enough candidates to run. So.
Correct.
Um.
I had one.
Yeah, so I'm sure that whoever gets the short term can just run again and, um, Bill?
Do the candidates have a preference as to whether they want to?
Yeah.
Ex- expire this year or expire within two years? Do the candidates have a feeling as to? How they're going to like this, how they want to proceed? Maybe the candidates would, uh, like to chime in as to. He, either or.
That's, that's a good point, Bill. Erica?
Um, I, I am just looking to serve my community in any capacity that's necessary at the current time. So, um, in any way that's necessary. So regardless of how I'm put in or. You know, how I would, I would sit, I'm looking, you know, for a long game in terms of supporting the town in Tiverton. Regardless if it's with the Budget Committee or beyond. So. It doesn't matter to me.
Erica, be careful. We might, uh, try to get you room for town council. Todd?
And the only thing I have to say, Erica, heads or tails? I look at a coin flip. It's probably the best way to settle it.
Who's got a coin? I don't, it makes no difference to me. I mean, we can say tails and.
You call it.
Chris has a coin.
I think that Mike's, um, as long as neither one of you have real an opinion and it doesn't sound like you do. I think Mike has the best, um, the idea of putting, um. Because Todd applied for us twenty twenty four, Erica twenty twenty two. And like I said, Erica, um. Don't worry if you want to continue. I'm sure you're going to be able to.
Yep.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Alright, so now I need to entertain the motion. Uh, well, first of all, because there's three openings and there's two people. I would, um, I think we can take our policy, we can, um, talk about the.
Make a motion to waive our policy.
Thank you, Mike. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion to ma- made to waive the policy by councillor Burke of, um, appointing somebody, not tonight, but in two weeks from now. Uh, councillor Edwards, um, second in it. All those in favor, councillor Burke?
Yes.
Councillor Viera?
Yes.
Councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I didn't entertain a motion at this time.
So, um, Madam President, I just want to have a thought and I look to the solicitor. I'll make a motion. I'll be happy to make a motion to appoint Mr. Cherry to the. One of the two terms ending in, and I just lost that, twenty twenty four. Um, and, um, Mizuruta to the term ending in twenty twenty two. However, I'd like to also keep our option open that. If that other person doesn't come to us by our next meeting. That, um, we don't have to vote again and we automatically put Mizuruta into the twenty twenty four slot. But I don't know if Mike thinks that's, no.
You have to, you have to have a vacancy first. So.
Okay, okay.
Well, we do, Mike.
We do.
We do. We'd still have one vacancy. But so what? Right. Saying right now is, can we, or maybe it's two separate motions or we just see what happens? I'm trying to keep our options open. If that other person decides, no, I don't want to extend.
I think he does though.
Okay.
I hope he does because that would improve the experience level on that committee.
Right, right.
If he doesn't, we still come back to it.
Right, right. Cause you, you have, you have the option to come back to it, but I wouldn't do that right now.
Okay.
And I happen to know that I think we're going to get another applicant also.
That'll like, that'll get us up in the even number.
Well, it'll be for, yeah. Okay, so I have a motion, um, to appoint. Both candidates, um, Mr. Cherry to twenty twenty four, Erica to twenty twenty two. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion's been made by councillor Burke, second by councillor Edwards. All those in favor, councillor Burke?
Yes.
Councillor Viera?
Yes.
Councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Congratulations, guys. Um, I look forward to working with both of you and thank you so much for this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright. So the next one is the Little Committee. So Chris, um, I don't know if you want to, yeah, okay. The next one is the Little Committee, um, is one vacancy and one candidate, Jessica Cullen. Uh, twenty one South Lake, request of, um, appointment to expire ten fifteen twenty twenty five. Hi Jessica.
Hello, how are you?
Good. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be in the Little Committee.
Yeah, so I moved to Tiverton about five years ago now. And since I've been a board member of the Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District. Um, and then last year I joined the Tiverton Land Trust. Um, I help plan events for these organizations. And last year while I was, um, working on some promotional events for a trash picking up contest. That we are calling a plogging contest through the Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District. Someone asked me if I was also on the Letter Committee. And I said, no. And they said, oh, you gotta start talking to them. And so I've been attending those meetings since. So for the past year, I've been attending their meetings, um, and helping them build their social media presence. And I've also been helping them get involved in partnerships with other organizations doing, um, cleanups in the, in Tiverton, in the area. Um, and I already feel like I'm on, I'm a part of the group. Um, this would be great to make it official.
Any questions for Jessica?
Not a question. Jessica has a former member of the Tiverton Land Board. Um, thank you for that and, uh, thank you for this, um, opportunity you'd like.
Any other questions? I want to also say that I find it very encouraging that some young people are coming aboard and, um. Joining these committees because some of us older people are getting a little tired. And it's really nice to see new faces and new enthusiasm. And thank you, Jessica.
Yeah.
Um, I like to, I'd like to entertain a motion to waive our policy. There's one candidate and one vacancy.
So moved.
Um, motion been made by councillor Viera. Um, do I have a second?
Second. Okay.
Um, Mike beat you to it at, um, Jay. So, um, second by councillor Burke. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Uh, councillor Burke?
Yes.
Councillor Viera?
Yes.
Councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I forgot how annoying it was to do the vote call like this. Alright, um. I'd like to, um, entertain a motion at this point for Jessica.
I'll make the motion that we appoint, uh, Jessica to the litter committee. What's the expiration term gonna be?
Twenty twenty, ten fifteen.
Twenty twenty five.
Uh, term to expire ten sixteen twenty five?
Fifteen.
Fifteen twenty five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made by councillor Edwards, second by councillor Viera. All those in favor, councillor Burke?
Yes.
Councillor Viera?
Yes.
Councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Welcome Jessica and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Personnel Board, five member board, four year term, one vacancy, Joanne Aruda. Twenty D on Avenue, request appointment to expire ten fifteen twenty twenty three. Joanne, I'm sure you heard what I said about new faces, but it's really good to see an oldie but goodie, okay? And welcome back. Um, Joanne, tell us a little bit about yourself for those who don't know you. And why you would like to be on the Personnel Board?
Hi, uh, glad to be back. Good to see everyone. Hello, everyone who I don't know. Um, but, uh, I was, I was asked to join the Personnel Board, um, which I was, I was happy to. From, uh, to, to join. Um, I've recently retired and I worked at the, um. Uh, the Brigham, um, the Brigham and Women's Hospital Dana Fabbic Institute for the past years. There I, I was practice manager for the Department of Radiation Oncology as well as managing. A spec- a specialty clinic in, in prostate cancer with my physician. And, uh, co- also co-managed, uh, the Harvard Radiation Oncology Residency Program. And within that program, I also, um, uh, was a part, I didn't vote. But I was also a part of, um, uh, accepting and choosing. The residents, you know, re- uh, medical students coming into the residency program. Of course, faculty members and the physicians that were involved in the, um, in the residency program, of course, did the, um. The lion's share of the, uh, of the accepting process, but we were there to support and. Condense all of their, um. Dissertations and their thesis, you know, all, all of the paperwork and, and the processes that it took. To have these, um, medical students come into the residency program. And then of course I was also a former, um, town council members from two thousand and four. And also with a, um, Budget Committee Member, um, within that time as well. And I've lived in Tiverton for thirty six years.
Thank you, Joanne. Anyone have any questions for Joanne? I want to tell you, I worked with her personally. And, um, she's a, we should welcome this wholeheartedly. And I also worked with her at St. Anne's at one point also professionally.
Yes.
She obviously has experience interviewing and vetting candidates, which will be very useful.
And again, welcome, Joanne. And I appreciate you coming back to give more service in your retirement.
You're welcome.
Although I'm sure you'd like to be sitting really at that palm tree at some point, but.
Yes, you will. Trust me, she will.
I will.
Um, alright, so at this point, like, like.
Motion to waive our policy.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Motion been made by councillor Burke to waive our policy, second by councillor Edwards, all those in favor, councillor Burke?
Yes.
Councillor Viera?
Yes.
Councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I entertain a motion for Joanne's appointment.
Uh, move the appointment of Joanna Aruda to, uh, term on the Personnel Board to expire ten fifteen. Twenty twenty three to fill an unexpired term.
Second.
Motion been made by councillor Burke, second by. Motion been made by Council Burke, second by Council Viera. All those in favor, Council Burke?
Yes.
Council Viera?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Welcome aboard, Joanne, again.
Thank you.
And Chris is clapping. I don't know if you can see him, but Chris also worked with you for a long time.
Yes, we have.
He's a great addition.
Thank you. Glad to be back.
Thanks, Joanne.
You're welcome.
All right, annual tree warden appointment to expire January 31st, 2023. Frankie Ramos, Manchesters Tree and Landscaping, 13 Edmund Lane Reappointment Request. Is Frankie in the audience? If you are Frankie, raise your hand.
Unless he's on a phone, I don't see a Frankie.
No. I have to say that we appointed Frank, Frankie, last year. We had recommendations from several residents concerning him, and that's why we appointed him at that time. I haven't heard he's not doing a good job, and usually if I don't hear bad things, then it's a good thing.
No, he's doing an excellent job, and I'm sure Rick Rogers would attest to that. He's been very studious and very economical about the way he's been treating the town. He's taking care of things as needed. It's not very, you know, he does an excellent job. He's very responsive, and like I said, he does a good job.
And as I said, last time we appointed him, we had raving recommendations from the community.
And he's a town resident.
Oh, he is. I like to entertain a motion.
I make the motion.
No, go ahead, Jay. Go ahead.
Jay, Mike's made enough.
Make the motion that we appoint Frankie Ramos, Manchesters Tree and Landscaping, reappointed to the position of tree warden, term to expire January 31st, 2023.
Do I have a second?
Do we have to waive our policy for this?
No, no, because there's only one tree wanted.
It's a reappointment anyhow.
Okay.
Do I have a second? Okay, the motion's been made by Council Edwards, second by Council Burke. All those in favor, Council Burke?
Yes.
Council Viera?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
And I mean, yes. Okay, General Business, DPW Director Rogers, Rogers, approval to award contract for specified recreation facility and turf management services for calendar year 2022. Is Rick in the audience?
He should be.
Yeah, I saw him before.
So we did go out to bid for this, for both them and the police. I'm trying to find, come on, where?
I got him. He's coming.
You've got Rick?
Yep.
Yeah, I just promoted him.
I don't know, actually. Oh, no, I'm sorry, we're on the turf, so sorry.
Oh, he's, he's by telephone, Mike?
No, he's right there. Oh, is he by telephone?
I think he is only by telephone.
Yeah, because we have two phone calls.
No, I, I'm here. Can you hear me? This is Rick.
Yes.
Hi, Rick, how are you?
Hi, I'm on the DPW computer on, on Zoom, so I'm not on phone.
Okay.
But, but yes, thank you. DPW does request that the Town Council award the contract for the specified recreational facility and turf management services for calendar year 2022. The bid opening was held on 12/17. GS Lawn and Garden was a little bitter. Their bid met legal requirements. DPW is very happy with GNS, GS Lawn and Garden, and we, as stated, we would like you to award the contract for them.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions from the council? I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve to award the contract for specific recreational, specific facility and turf management services to GNS Lawn and Garden for calendar year 2022.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion's been made by Council Viera, second by Council Cook. All those in favor, Council Burke?
Yes.
Council Viera?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. DPW Director Rogers, Rogers, approval to award contract for DPW surplus equipment to Excel Recycling LLC. Rick?
Yes, thank you, and also thank you for awarding the contract for the turf management. Yes, DPW does request that the Town Council award the DPW surplus vehicles to Excel Recycling LLC, and it's also requested per the Town Council 11/8/21 meeting, an approved motion that the funds be, that are received from the DPW surplus vehicles go to a restricted capital account. The bid opening was held on 12/29/21. Excel Recycling LLC was the high bidder. The bid met the legal requirements, so we, we request that they be awarded the surplus vehicles.
Any questions from the council? Like to entertain a motion?
I will make a motion that we award the contract for DPW surplus equipment to Excel Recycling in the amount of $12,500.
Second it.
Motion to be made by Council Edward, second by Council Viera. All those in favor, Council Burke? Mike, you unmute?
Sorry, yes.
You're the first one I had to say that to. Council of Viera?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Police Chief Jones, approval to award contract for police surplus vehicles for Excel Recycling LLC. Hi, Patrick, you unmute?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Good evening. So this is similar to the Director Rogers' request of the surplus police vehicles and some of the older vehicles that we had between the DPW garage and the Police Department. The bid was put out, it was approved by the council, and the bids were open on December 28th, similar, exactly similar to the DPW, and the high bidder was Excel Recycling. So much like the DPW request, we are asking and requesting that you approve the bid to the high bidder, so we can dispose of these vehicles.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah, chief, what are you going to do with all that extra land you have then?
That's a conversation for another time, Council.
Yeah, please, Mike, let's not go there right now. Do I have a motion?
So I'll make somebody.
Chris, you want to say something?
Yeah, I would, I would want to ensure that those funds on behalf of the treasure go to the capital account, the restricted capital account. The capital funds that we've been using to, you know, from the, that we, there, there's a restricted municipal capital account that we're in. Okay.
So can we make that motion, Mike, to put it there? Marcelo? You're unmute?
He's looking.
I'm, I'm just looking at the agenda.
We're just award, we're just awarding the contracts. We can, I think you should make the decision where you put the money, the letter D.
Okay.
That might have to be a resolution, because that capital comes from a specific. Doesn't that count? I don't remember what monies go into that capital account, but it's very specific, and it was a resolution at one point.
Okay, so we'll, we'll dig up how we can do that, because we're trying to restrict those funds.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of what monies go in there, and I'm sorry, but I'm, I don't remember.
Rebates, rebates from.
I remember, Jay, what is it from?
The, the money we get back on a grant, like for police vehicles, didn't that go in?
No, it's more than that, though. It's leftover.
That was one of the things.
So there were carryover, there were carryover funds from, that were left in different accounts.
I think it's a percentage of.
Yes, it is.
Right, Donna, it's a percentage of what's left over from the general.
And it has to be a resolution, because the people have to have it on a ballot.
Okay.
And I think it's account 9999.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just know that it's, it's a specific item that goes there.
Yep.
Yeah, percentage of leftover funds at the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, I think, I, yeah, I think it's 25, but don't quote me. All right, so at this point, we just want to approve Police Chief Jones' request. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Somebody other than me.
Bill, go ahead, Bill, go ahead.
Motion to award the contract for police surplus vehicles to Excel Recycling LLC in the amount of $11,000.
Motion to be made, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Cook. All those in favor, Council Burke?
Yes.
Council Viera?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
And I mean, yes. Thank you, Patrick. School District Business Manager.
Madam President, can we move to 9E first, and I'll come right back to that. I got Tim Tease waiting in the way.
Oh, I'm sorry, you had asked me that before.
Yeah, I know. It might take a while to do the oil thing, so.
Yeah.
Motion, do you need a motion, do I know?
Yes, I do.
Motion to move item 9F to the top of the.
No, it's 9E.
I'm sorry, 9E to the top of our agenda.
Being 9I.
9E and 9I to the top of our agenda.
Okay.
So 9E is simply a.
Wait a minute, I have a motion, I need a second. All those in favor, Council Burke?
Yes.
Council Viera?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
And Council Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Welcome, Tim. Go ahead, Chris.
9E is an annual addition that has been an addendum to his contract to, to the groundwater monitoring at the landfill. This is in addition to his general services contract. It's been done annually, and it needs to be continued for this continuing year as a DEM requirement, that that be monitored. So I think it's kind of ministerial, but I still wanted to get this contract addendum to you.
As we do this every year.
Yep.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I have my math right. When you look at all the additions for potential other wells and the like, is the up, the maximum cost potential on this 10,200? It's 24, go ahead, Tim.
Oh, sorry, it's the, the total contract value, I think a year is 43,000 or 40. It's that times four. Because it's quarterly monitoring, just to be clear, it's quarterly monitoring.
So 43 or 4,000 times four?
No, no, excuse me. It, for the year, it's 43,000.
Oh, okay.
That sounds right.
If I may say, this is Rick, and hopefully you can hear me all right.
Yes, we can.
Says, but there's also the other monitoring that Tim does, and that, that's along the line of, I don't have the number right in front of me, but that's along the line of, I thought 50-something. And then, not because of PAR, but because of DEM, they have added extras, and you're looking at about 2,400 for laboratory fees, again, DEM required, and you're looking at about 4,000 for additional unit pricing on the second well that DEM is required. And then, unknown exactly, Tim can correct me on this if, if need be, that they are also requiring additional assessment monitoring, and each one of those per well is $1,900. So you, you might have four of those, you might have two of those, you might have six of those. But round figures, you're looking at an additional 4,000, maybe 7,000 for that.
Right.
So the addition required by DEM, not counting the flat fee that PAR gets just for regular monitoring, the additional DEM requirements over the last year or so are maybe along the lines of anywhere from 12,000 to 15,000.
Correct, so.
We did know that, as, as part of closing this landfill, we're going to be additional monitoring requirements.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get an actual figure, that's all I was looking.
So I can, if, if you would like, I can clarify a little bit. Our, our, we call it our base contract for the, the wells and the sampling that's in your groundwater monitoring plan right now adds up to about 43,000 per year, and then what Rick was mentioning was the DEM does require on a periodic basis, basis for us to add monitoring, to either add different parameters at certain wells, or to do additional wells while we're out there. And that's on a quarter-by-quarter basis, they make that determination, and that can add up to about, like Rick said, somewhere between 10 and 15 grand.
Yeah, okay, and that's what I was reading in, in the letter that was provided us.
Council Edwards?
Okay, so I'm just looking, we haven't got it to yet, but when we get the budget presentation, landfill engineering, testing, and permitting, which this is part of, the new amount is going to be requested is just a little north of $73,000. Last year, we're just shy of $58,000, so it went up about 15, which is what we're talking about here. Yep, just to put it in perspective, where we're at, where we're going. And this is, like we said, we do it every year, and we're going to be doing it for the next 40 years.
Council Viera, did you have a question?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. Any further questions? I'd entertain a motion.
Hey, I'll move that we. No, I won't. Hang on.
Bill was ready, Bill was ready, I think.
Bill, you're ready, go ahead.
Motion to award power engineering, the landfill groundwater monitoring contract extension.
Second. Motion's been made by Council Viera, second by Council Burke. All those in favor, Council Burke?
Yes.
Council Viera?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We're going to now go to 9. 9I.
Thank you.
Yes, Town Administrator Land Closure Update.
So 9I is the memo that came to you today in person to your homes. It's basically a summary of the email that I sent on 10/28. I think, no, 10/20, where we had the bid openings for the five vendors who applied for the landfill closure. And PAR staff did a very good job, and you have all the analysis of how they ranked these five individuals, these firms. And they were ranked from one to five, and then, once that was done, we went back to the town clerk, showed her that we'd actually done the review analysis, and then we wanted to look at the cost proposals, because the technical proposals actually scored up to 70 points, and the cost proposal scored up to 30. And the lowest bid would actually get 30 points, and it's a formula based on the lowest bid to the individual bids on how the cost piece gets ranked out. But when we were done with all that, there were two firms that ranked, one and two. And we decided to have a interview process with them, and we went through a number of different things. Mostly, we wanted to ensure whoever it was that was going to get the bid, that whatever they put in their technical proposal that they stated would be the staff that would, they would be utilizing, they were guaranteeing us that that actually is the staff, and that they had the equipment necessary to do this project in a timely manner, because it's going to take some extensive equipment to do this. We went over some safety protocols, we went over some community, community protocols, and we want, just wanted to have an assurance of that both those firms were capable of being awarded this. At the end of the day, while the second firm was very good, and has probably done more landfills in the Northeast region than the first one, they're both very familiar with the membrane that we're going to be utilizing. They both have the same subcontractor to do that membrane, and they're both capable of doing this job. The issue boils down to really, there's a huge differential in cost, about $900,000. We think that, once we talked about the change order process, and what we, our expectations were as a community, that we were satisfied that we could keep the, the number one contractor, who was actually the low bid, within the constraints of that bid, and keep the change orders to a minimum that would negate the differential on the cost. They're both very good firms, but we'd be recommending JH Lynch as the primary contractor to be awarded this contract. There are a couple of other issues that we need to talk about at a future date. One is, we would, you know, so that we're not blinded by. There are a couple of other issues that we need to talk about at a future date. Uh, one is we would, you know, so that we're not blinded by, and I did provide the dollar of values in the memo of today that show that the low bid is eleven million four hundred two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. But we have not considered any types of contingency fees for any change orders that might come about as a result of this. Nor have we explored or or considered the cost of having somebody be an overseer of this project because somebody's going to have to be at this landfill while this firm is doing this job to ensure that the town is getting what they're paying for. So, you know, there are two different components. I just don't want anybody to be blinded that this is only an eleven point four million dollar project. So with that, I would suggest and ask that the council approve the awarding of this to J H Lynch. And if you have any questions of Tim or Rick or myself about the process and what this, you know, review went through or what the bid documents contained or anything that would, you know, help you satisfy your need to be justifiable when you're making your your bid award.
I am confused because are we looking at Town Administrator Land Closure Update?
Yes.
That's a you should.
So. Right. Saying no, there there isn't a line. I know there is. It isn't on the agenda to grant this contract.
Yeah, I didn't think so. I'm looking all over the place.
Yeah, so we can't do that tonight.
And I'm voting on it, huh?
Nobody.
Yeah, it's just enough. It's just enough.
Right, but Chris was just asking us to vote for it, right, Chris?
Yeah, I thought I had the.
On here. So what we'll have to do is put it on the next agenda. Will that be a problem?
No, it won't be a problem. Obviously, it's just, um, we don't expect this work to get done anytime soon. I mean, it's a spring project. We don't think we can be doing anything in the wintertime, but we would like the vendor to at least start the process of securing some of the issues that they're going to need. But also, while we're here, and if you've got any questions of Tim, Rick and myself, obviously now would be the time to.
Oh, wait a minute. Um, would that come under, um, landfill closure update?
Yes.
No, yeah, yeah.
I thought it was an agenda request for this.
But Donna, there would have to be an actual item that said that we're going to give the bid.
Oh, I get it. Okay.
You get it. In my mind, I, I, yeah.
Yeah. There is, you'd have to, this, an update is not a vote.
Right.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, um, just, you know, in not being in this area of expertise at all, um, Tim or Rick, what's, and I don't expect you to go into all the technical details. What, what's the base bid aspect of it and what's the alternate bid aspect of it?
Sure, I can speak to that. So the, the closure requirement for the landfill, and this is spelled out in your operating plan and also your closure plan, uh, approved by the DEM, has us closing the landfill in four phases. And so the way we structured the bid, because we weren't certain where the bid prices were going to come in, because there's been so much cost uncertainty lately, right, with everything that's going on in the world. So we didn't know where the prices were going to come in and whether or not you had enough money in the closure account to award the entire contract, the entire landfill. So we, we broke out phases one, two and three, which are the order in which they're supposed to be done. We broke those phases out as the base bid and we broke out phase four, which is the last phase. That's actually the phase of the landfill that it being filled right now. That's where the town is currently, um, landfilling waste. We put that as as an alternate and that gives the town the ability to, you could award just one, two and three right now if you wanted to go seek alternate funding for phase four. Like, so we, again, we didn't, weren't certain if the town was going to want to maybe, uh, bond for phase four, if you didn't have enough money or if the town was going to want to maybe borrow from infrastructure bank, uh, but this would give you the latitude to get one, two and three going while we figured out the financing for phase four.
Could we?
As an alternate.
Could we award it, and this is much for Michael, maybe, um, with the contingency that's based on available funding? The second, the alternate.
All right. Yeah, that's a question. I'm not, I'm not certain that that's a kind of a.
The funding has to be there, right? We have to figure that out.
Right.
Right, but at this point, we don't have it.
We don't have a hundred percent of it.
We're very.
But over the course of time, like the year or two that it's going to take to complete this project, we're going to accrue more funds out of the page you throw. And we.
So, yeah, and my reason for asking that is because right now we have, I'm going to just use around number, about ten million dollars. So it obviously isn't going to cover the alternate bid plus those other expenses that Chris talked about. Okay, so we'd be entering into a contract without a funding source for everything. Unless we had, I think at least unless we had language that bases that alternate piece on subsequent, um, finding subsequent funding. But I don't know. Once you, once you award the contract, we, you're obligated to pay, pay for that contract, so.
So what, so we're obligated to do this project one way or another. All right, so the, we're gonna have to find the money for the uh, extra piece of this that we don't have secured and statuaries cash today. It doesn't mean that you can't award the contract. If, if we ideally, uh, and it's a suggestion that I'll throw out there, and we're not going to be voting on anything like this tonight anyhow, is, uh, to give uh, Mike Marcello, myself, Tim Tease and Rick the opportunity to go speak to the infrastructure bank. Because ideally, we might be able to finance the whole thing through the infrastructure bank, reserve and restrict the existing monies now to make the payments for it. And the reason why I say that is because with all the opera money that's sitting out there today, the infrastructure bank is trying to find projects that they can expend this on and they might be able to use, uh, some sort of debt forgiveness portion of this, uh, for a lot of stormwater issues, environmental issues and other things through the opera grants. So we may be able to find a way to fund the unfunded piece by, by going through a funding source that would give us the ability to leverage monies to make it more beneficial for the community. So we haven't explored that yet. We do need to do that. There is monies available. The infrastructure is, is, infrastructure bank, it knows about this project. They're very interested in talking to us. And there are some parameters that we can outline, uh, that might be able to bring us some forgiveness of this to help pay for this project. So I don't want to say that, you know, we don't have the money. We might. Um, and we might have it, uh, through a number of different ways. Uh, and there is contract language that can still draw the drawdown process to a point where the town actually does have the money. So we're obligated to do this project, whether we like it or not.
We know that, yeah.
So we need to find a way to help pay for this. We haven't done all that piece yet. We need to do that. But it doesn't mean that we shouldn't have gone out the bid and look at trying to find a vendor for this. We can also put these bids on a thirty day hold for a minute or try to have them, you know, secure their, you know, their baseline bid prices, uh, knowing that we're going to award this.
I'll, I'll just add, we did make it clear to the, to the bidders when they were bidding on this, that the town may opt to award phases one, two and three now and then award phase four in the future. You know, in, in the following year. So we made the bidders aware that 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 might happen.
But if we do that, we run the risk of having that cost go up quite a bit.
Well, we know, we told the bidders that, that what they provided for, for, for the alternate for phase four, they had to hold that bid price um, until we made the award. But that we would, you know, we have to make the award in a reasonable amount of time. We can't hold their bids for two, three, four years. You know, the, the expectation is that they're going to be working on phase four in twenty twenty-three.
So right now, we're about one point two million short. We would be. We're going to get more page you throw, probably maybe five hundred thousand. So we'll be short in the neighborhood of maybe five or six hundred thousand, which is not terrible.
Now, there's monies. I mean, we, we, let's, let's face it, guys, we have to do it.
Oh, we don't have a choice.
No, but what monies we use and how we use it, that there's.
Yeah.
You know.
Oh, absolutely. But what I'm trying to say is we will have the money.
Yes.
No matter what avenue we go down, we will have the money.
Um, may I say something?
Sure, Donna.
I'm sorry.
Rick, is it, I've seen Councilor Cook talk and then I'll, then I'll let you.
Thank you.
Um, it's, it's, it's something that I had thought of, um, just, you know, thinking about, uh, the last phase uh, of closing the landfill and that we were short of money. And it was funny because I was thinking, would there be any way that when we could ask someone to, uh, hold off while we get the money from the pay as you throw? And of course, I didn't know there was some other, other ways to make money or actually get grants. So I think that's a good option, uh, for now.
Well, I can tell you the one option of extending this is a no. Um, DEM is pretty adamant that this is it. We're done.
Yeah, I know that, but I'm just thinking of the, the extension I'm talking about, uh, at that all the money's not going to come right away in the, in the fourth quarter or the fourth payment. I think it's a good idea to, uh, with, with the plan you have.
Right. All right.
I'm keeping in mind, we have the capital account and we also have the casino money that we haven't determined.
Right.
That's going to be allocated this year.
So we also, we also have American recovery monies too that we could look at.
We did.
So there, you know, it's not like we don't have resources. It's trying to find the, the appropriate resource to do this that is more beneficial to our taxpayers.
Well, the best part of this is so far we haven't had to tax them for this.
Correct.
So, um.
The bag fees they consider to be.
The bag fees, but I mean, if you really think about it, it's not their taxes.
No, I get it.
Oh, a fee is a tax.
No, it's not. It's a user fee. It's a user fee.
It's still a tax.
No, it's not. It's a user.
Oh, you just call it something else.
It's not a tax.
All right.
No, it's not.
I disagree, Mike.
No, look it up. Look up the definition.
You can look up anything. It's more money out of people's pocket.
And the definitions of user fees.
No.
Okay, we're going to, okay, we're going to agree to disagree on this subject.
Yeah.
Um, and we're going to move forward. Um, so is there any further questions on this update?
The, the one thing I was going to say, Denise, if I.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rick. Go ahead.
No, no, no problem. But I think one of the points that Jay was making was that, uh, if the, you know, phase four was not awarded at this time, that, which is possible, but the, the hiccup with that is if the prices go up in, uh, in the future, then, then you'd be paying more. So I think that I agree with that. There's certainly a risk of that and I think that's a point Jay was making. That's all.
Yes. Thank you, Rick. All right, so we can move on. Um, is everyone satisfied? And then we, we will definitely put this on the agenda and, and, um, the clerk keeps, keeps me in line with that, so I'm sure she'll remind me.
Jim, is there anything you think that we need that we haven't said or did I pretty much cover?
No, you, I think you covered it pretty well. Um, you know, we are excited to get this thing going. We are thinking, you know, about a March start date. Um, and I think putting this off till the next meeting, I think is fine. I think that's still aligned with the March start date for the contractor. DEM is very happy to see that this is progressing.
I'm sure they are.
We've been giving them updates and they're very happy with that, so.
So all this information is on the town's website, so it is all public today. Everything came out. It's been through the bidding process, the, the recommendations, the vetting. Um, the ultimate award will come from you with the next council meeting that we have, but I, I wouldn't expect that we would change our recommendation between now and then, so.
Uh, can I ask one quick, one last quick question, just clear here? And this is for Tim and Chris. Is, is Pear prepared to provide us with a foreman, if you will, under contract, keep an eye on this whole thing, being there? Because I, I anticipate that we're talking, uh, what, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this to happen?
Uh, that sounds about right. I, I haven't crunched the numbers yet, but that sounds about right. Um, yes, we are prepared to have somebody out there watching this project progress. Um, there's a number of, not just, there's another quality control, things that have to be met during construction, you know, for the, 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 there's a whole, I won't go through all of them. There's a lot. Um, but at the end of this, we have to certify to the state that the project was completed and that the landfill closure was completed, uh, in accordance with their requirements.
And you guys would be the guys to do this because you went with it from the beginning and there's a host of things that can go wrong.
Yes.
So, so we'll try to have something for your next council meeting as a conceptual plan or kind of contract to, to work with that. And we'll probably have a recommendation for a contingency plan as well.
Yep.
Very good.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Thank you, Rick. Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. School District Business Manager Roderick's discussion, possible vote to ratify contracts for Casey's Oil and Propane for number two, heating oil.
So I did ask Amy to come to this. She said they weren't doing this bid until tomorrow night formally with the committee. Um, I will tell you that back in.
So, so wait a minute, Chris. So she didn't come?
I don't believe she's here in the waiting room. Oh, just hang on. Let me look in the waiting room again.
I really thought she should be here.
Well, it is a project that they have managed, um, but I think I can give you an update on it. Let's see.
She's not.
I do not see her in here.
I was hoping she would be here to answer some questions, but go ahead, Chris.
Um, well, we can put it off to the next meeting.
No.
All right, so there came a little bit of an issue when the contract came up for Santa Buckley. Uh, they had went out and the, the school administration, they had looked to do a phone bid quote for oil and wound up getting some bids. Unfortunately, I had to dispute the bids. And I kind of forced a hand to go out to bid with this because it is a pretty extensive amount of, uh, money involved here. So the original bids came in like it, I think it was two eighty-seven a gallon, but two seventy-six a gallon. Um, and because we went out to open competitive bidding, um, for both communities, Little Compton's involved with this as well. The bids came in at two forty-two a gallon, uh, they want it with a significant savings, about fifty-one thousand dollars overall. Um, there are two different types of bids for this. There is a fixed price bid, which we've agreed to, uh, technically. And there's a daily market, uh, the terminal, um, which can fluctuate. But there's a, a point two two five add-on to the daily market. The problem with the daily market is it can spike to the point where it get up over three dollars a gallon and we'd be stuck with that. It could also go down to two, you know, of, um, less than two dollars. But we're confident that the, uh, fixed daily price will be a better benefit because we can budget better and we have a known commodity. Uh, especially with a hundred and fifty thousand gallons of oil across both communities. We thought that was probably the most prudent way to do this. So Casey's wound up being the only vendor. Um, technically, Santa Buckley put a bid in, it came in by FedEx on the day of the bids. It came in late. Um, but their bid was two eighty a gallon. And then there's a state master price, uh, agreement that I went to that vendor specifically on my own, uh, and quoted the same gallons and it was two eighty-five a gallon. So this is a good deal, um, I think on behalf of the community. And the fact that it was put out the bid and done appropriately, I think is a testament that, you know, sometimes things work and we get the best bang for our buck.
Yeah, and I, 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 I'm not sure you're all aware of this, but Chris was the one that made this happen because originally this, um, the business manager signed a contract on behalf of all of us and Chris pointed out that that really can't be, can't happen. And that, um, she didn't really go out for it. Uh, she didn't do the bidding process as required. And Chris was the one that found that. So, um, kudos to Chris for, uh, saving us this money.
Yet again.
Well, I just, you know, I'm a little bit more adverse to this maybe because I've done it for my whole career with the AG's office, but you know, knowing how to do the state procurement and state regulations as it relates to purchasing, you do have to follow the rules. Um, and there are a lot of them. So.
So Little Compton will also be.
They will benefit from this as well and their town council will also ratify this contract as well.
Any questions?
Madam President?
Yeah.
Um, question in a statement, um, question. So Chris, the suggestion is that we approve the fixed price only, correct?
Correct. I would, I would approve fixed price only.
Okay.
I, I am not comfortable with market change on, especially with a commodity like oil.
Totally agree with you. Um, the, the statement is, and I think, Madam President, and correct me if I'm wrong, this, um, interagency, if you will, intergovernmental, um, operation was started by, when you and I were on the school committee, um, at our behest with Chris on the budget committee, I believe, and I forget who was on the council. So, um, I am concerned that, and I appreciate that, you know, Amy is relatively, relatively new, um, to her role. Um, but I am concerned that it was not brought to our attention before that, um, first, uh, contract, um, was signed and that also that no one from the school department is here to at least, um, present and, and discuss this. um, present and, and discuss this with us to the extent that anybody on the council wants it to be discussed.
So that, that old, um, collaborative that we used to have, it was the East Bay Purchasing District or East Bay Collaborative that we had that that included Newport, Midtown Portsmouth, Little Compton, Tiverton. Um, and we all bought a number of different things through that collaborative. That thing is pretty much disbanded. It's basically just, I think, Tiverton and Little Compton today. I don't think anybody else is involved in it. So I, the issue really came about last year when we signed a contract with Santa Buckley and we wound up paying a pe- premium penalty for not acquiring the oil gallons that we said that we would. And I, you know, I really wanted to ensure that we didn't go down that road again, that we should only be locked into the year of like this past year, if we only did a hundred and twenty thousand gallons, that's the number we should be locked into. Um, it should not be some premium that was suggested ten years ago that with all the efficiencies that we have, that we should never buy into that premium adjustment again. Uh, so when it came about again this year, you know, I did make mention it to the school administration and uh, she did at least go out to bid. Um, and I, you know, you're right, she is new. She's probably not familiar with some of the state laws that we have and, you know, I, I don't think it was at all ill intent. I mean, I, I just think it was just a bad practice, but, um, thankfully we did get rectified and she did get, uh, do a good job of getting the bids out and getting it back. And unfortunately, Casey's was, and I, I don't begrudge Casey's, he did what he's supposed to do. So, you know, we at least got a good bang for our buck doing it the right way. But I, I don't know if we should do this collaborative anymore, but that's, you know.
Uh, yeah, I'm not, I, I don't really remember the reason why the others weighed out on this.
I don't know.
I, I did know though, at some point, but, um, it was a while ago. It was, oh, oh, it was at the beginning of my council days.
It was, it was more than oil that you bought. It was books. Right. It was everything. It was.
It was a lot of things. Okay, any other questions from the council? I'd like to entertain a motion to ratify the contract for Casey's oil and propane for number two heating oil. Um, and included.
Two forty-two a gallon.
Okay, thank you. Who's gonna make the motion?
So moved.
Which has been made by Council Edwards, seconded by Council Vieira, all those in favor, Council Burke.
Yes.
Council Vieira.
Yes.
Council Edwards.
Yes.
Council Cook.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
And I want to correct, thank Chris again.
Thank you, Chris. You're welcome.
Town Administrator, Rhode Island Ethics Commission Training Reminder.
So I did get some feedback from the Ethics Commission about, you know, they hadn't heard that anybody in, in Tiverton had been signing up for these ethics training classes and I just wanted to get out publicly, any elected official or any appointed official that makes decisions is really required to follow the ethics rules and regulations and be appropriately trained. So I will send it out to everybody again, uh, just to make sure that, you know, we are required to do these trainings. I will see if I can get her to come back and do, I think last year she did a Zoom meeting for us.
Yes, she did.
She did some trainings for us. Lynn Reddy, she's a very nice person and does a very good job of getting the training done, so I'll see if we can get something done as a group or a community.
Thank you.
But Chris, e- even if you did that, as long as they took this online training, that would count.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So we could do this on our own time when we can fit it in.
Yeah. Okay, um, Town Administrator, discussion impossible vote on U S Department of Justice. Is that the next one? Yeah.
It is. Yep, on the.
Fifty thousand dollar police.
Let me bring in the chief.
Um, it was just here.
Yeah, I don't know where he went.
Did you make, you put him back in the attending?
I think he went to get a donut and coffee. Sorry, chief!
He went to look at his empty parking lot, figure out how he's gonna use it.
Where are you, Patrick?
I just let him back in.
Did you hear what Mike just said?
Hopefully he was transitioning.
Do you hear what Mike just said? Yeah, okay.
Unfortunately.
Remember that and you know where he lives.
He's in much better physical condition than I am.
Uh, so, good evening, um, just to kind of update everybody. So what, as all of you know, um we're very in the police department, we're very aggressive when it comes to seeking alternate sources of revenue and grant funding. We've been very successful with the USDA and many other sources. So back in the summertime, um, I got the notification from the Department of Justice that the cops grant was available. These grants are extraordinarily competitive. To be perfectly honest, I didn't think that we would get. But to our credit, what the, the whole, my whole aspect and approach to applying for this grant under it was with community policing. As all of you know, all of our community policing efforts have been very successful in town. So that what I did put in for is to have two police officers hired. So, and under the auspice of that, it just want to be two police officers that we'd be putting back on the road. These two police officers specifically would be one dedicated to community policing full-time. And the second one would be dedicated to our mental health issues that we're dealing with in town. I did crunch some quick numbers about the mental health issues, which I'll address the last comment first. We are responding on average to two to three mental health calls a day. Last year, we did approximately five hundred and twenty-two mental health calls. And we're not tracking them well. We're in the midst of doing a better job of dealing with mental health. I know there are people in the audience today from Newport County Mental Health, which I've had personal discussions with who want to come into our agency, and this is a nationwide conversation, to talk about partnering with pu- police and also training police with clinicians, so we can address these mental health concerns. On the community, uh, policing aspect of this, as you know, and I know Sergeant Le Duke is in the, is in the room as well. Sergeant Le Duke has been our, the tip of the spear when it comes to our community advocacy. Since I was appointed as police chief and since I came from town, one of the hallmarks that I wanted to do with everyone in the police department was get back out there so everyone knows who their police officers are. And Sergeant Le Duke has been leading that charge. As of right now, Sergeant Le Duke is on duty right now and he's running the four to twelve shift as the four to twelve shift sergeant. All the time that Sergeant Le Duke is doing all of our community advocacy, he's either doing it on his own time or I'm removing him from the shift, or I'm paying him overtime. So the whole point of this grant is to fund a position for him to run community policing and also dedicate a person that can do mental health full-time. Now, I know there is some concern about, okay, if we grant this grant, we own these police officers forever. To be clear, this grant is going to spend seventy-five percent of a police officer's salary for three years. Up to one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year, per position. So after the three years, we would have to keep the police officers for an additional twelve months. But meaning that, well, everything that we have now, all the staffing we have now, plus these two police officers that we would hire so we could promote two police officers that we currently have. Now, these two positions and the reasons why I would want to promote police officers instead of just hiring two more is because specifically these two police officer positions would be promotions and they, they wouldn't fall under the current staffing issues of the IBPO contract. So that would be a concern that we wouldn't have to worry about that if we didn't want to fill these positions in three years and twelve months, we could eliminate them through attrition. To be honest, I'm hopeful that if we have this conversation in three years, that we'd want, we wouldn't want to get rid of community policing. We'd want to expand it even more. But I know that that is a concern that if we accept this grant, we hire these two police officers, we own them forever. That's not, that's not true. So that's pretty much where I stood when I put in for this grant. It was approved by the Department of Justice. There, they were very excited about what we put forward about the ideas that we had, which is, I'm assuming why we got the money that we got and we got the most amount of money that we received and one of the few agencies in the state that received the amount of money that we did. So that is the direction that I want to go with these funds. And it's not just to hire more police officers to put them on the road, it's to redirect our efforts that we're already doing so we can do them better, more effectively and essentially have the government pay for them, at least for the next three years.
Right. Patrick, you confused me just a tiny bit.
Go ahead.
Let's go back a little bit. So we're gonna hire two more to go on the road.
That's correct. These are, so we're gonna promote and then we're gonna hire back. Yes.
And let me tell you, John, I think you have done an unbelievable job. I've watched you the last couple of years and I'm very, very impressed. Um, and the community really enjoys you being there. I noticed everyone knows you. And I want to give you a lot of kudos for that. Um, and I just want to say that, and I'm perfectly confident that you would do even a better job doing this full-time. Um, so saying that, so we, we, we would hire two to go on the road and take two of our current police officers and promoting them.
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay, in three years. Okay, so in three years, we have them, we, we have this force, but then we're obligated for another year.
Twelve months.
To keep these men on.
Correct.
So the cost of that would be?
Hours.
Okay, and that would be in the budget in three years?
Correct.
Yep.
So when we were first discussing this at the agenda, meaning I understood that in three years, we could we could, um, keep these officer, we didn't, we didn't have to keep these offices. We could put them for um, any kind of, um, people that are retiring or people that quit, but we can't do that for a whole nother year. Is that correct?
It is. Well, so what ends up happening is this, and it's funny that um, Council Burke wrote up the, why they want to extend the police academy, because, um, they only have two. So what we need to do is we need to fund the positions in the budget. But what can happen is if at the beginning of that twelve-month period, we make three years, the thir- the thirty-six-month period that the government is reimbursing us ends. There's a twelve-month window that we need to keep. If an officer retires during those twelve months, fiscally, that position must stay on the budget, per the DOG regulations, but
We don't have to.
It's gonna take us time to hire that position. It takes eighteen months to fill it. So as long as it stays on in the budget that it's there, it's likely that we won't be able to fill that position until after the twelve months, if we have a retirement. And as you know, it's a, it's I've said it to you before, I've worked for the town for over thirty years. There hasn't been a year that's gone by in the police department that we've been full staffed. Because of retirements, resignations and transfers.
Now, contractually, you wouldn't be increasing the force we have now.
That's correct.
Okay.
We are, we are at, as you know, it's twenty-seven with my position in the unit contract.
I understand what you're saying about they may become unfilled, so we wouldn't be spending that money. But we'd still have to tax for that additional money.
It'd still be in the budget. That is correct.
It'd still be in the budget. It would be savings, and if we don't spend it, it goes back into the general fund.
That is correct.
But our budget would be increased by these two men in, in year four.
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that.
And I, I want to be completely transparent. You are correct.
Now, at the end of eh, four, if we decide that this program is not working for us, or if we can't afford this program, then we have the option to abort it.
Yes.
Okay.
Or put in for another grant to support.
Oh, I know how you are and you're gonna be very, if, if we're all still here, I know it's, okay. I, I know you will be insistent.
I'll give you all their options, ma'am.
And, and I'm not saying that I, I don't think it's a worthy program. I just want everybody to be fully aware that we will have to fund this at some point. And, um, at the end of the four years, a decision will have to be made. So, um, did this work? Do we see an outcome from this? Um, and if you're not chief, you probably still will be by then, but not gumwood. Um, but if you're not chief, then that's what that chief would have to do, would have to fight for this and tell us why we need to continue this program.
Correct. I would like to think that we'll know before the four years.
Well, me too, me too, but you do know in that, that, that budget season, there will be a discussion.
Absolutely.
Well, there's gotta be a discussion after the third year, to tell you the truth.
Yes, ma'am. I know, and I, I've spoken to Sergeant Le Duke about this, and I am fully confident that he's gonna make that decision to eliminate that unit. Extraordinarily hard for us to do. So I know he's gonna.
You can hear, oh yeah, there he is. John, you keep moving around my screen.
And just, just so you know too, and I know that I gave the backup for the information, and this is something that we could possibly explore that right now we have one SRO. I know that there was a discussion with the school department about a second SRO. I would not commit if this, if you approve this and we do this. I would not commit any more police officers to the school department without your permission. However, I would train this, the community policing lieutenant to be an SRO. So we could have that option. So at any time in the budget, we could seek out a memorandum of understanding with the school that maybe they would pay for that extra twenty-five percent that we're gonna have to pay.
Yeah, but Patrick, keep in mind, they didn't even want to pay for this one, this budget.
I completely understand.
Okay, so, so that may be an argument we may not win with them.
And, and it could be, but let them argue. I mean, I'm looking at it as with the SRO, because the SRO is not always there. One of the things that we want to get back on, and I can let the sergeant, if you'd allow, speak to some of the initiatives that we want to do with this on top of the mental health, is we want to put a community policing office in Born Mill. We want to do community outreach. We want to bring back the explorer post, and we also want to take young men and women who are graduating the high school and have an interest in criminal justice and bring them in. So we're doing recruitment and retention at the high school level. So if they go on to college and they do college locally, they will come back and serve the police department. And also what the lieutenant would do in charge of community policing was with the recreation committee, he would be the liaison for recreation. You, you both know that we have Ed and Josh, the special officers who do all the beach patrols. I'd like to expand that and have young men and women that would come out and supplement us to do the parking issues, to do traffic, to do walking the beach like, uh, special officers Ed and Josh already do. But have young men and women in the high school that would come on board and do this and use that as a recruitment and retention tool. And the, I remember that Council of Cook brought that up with the fire chief about going in to see if we could recruit people at the high school level to bring them on board. We want to do the same thing with the community policing unit, so we can bring our, our students back to serve the police department.
And they could also use that as their community service hours, which a lot of them are always looking for something. Um, Donna, I see your hand. Um.
I have a lot, I have a lot to say, but.
Alright, go ahead, Donna.
Yeah, um, let me just take, get rid of my hand, how to get rid of it. Okay, oh, did I get rid of me? Alright, wait a minute.
No, 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 no. Your hand's gone, but you're still here.
Alright. Alright, first of all, um, you have to look at the numbers and you have to look how they work out. And this would be a cost to the taxpayers. And I have to bring up the FEMA firefighter grant, which would have cost us two-point-six million dollars with almost the same type of an outline as this. What I'm gonna ask is has Tim Cavaza looked over this grant? Because you, go ahead.
I spoke with Mr. Cavaza today. So, and I explained to him what, what I just explained to you all. That if we hire these positions under the grant, what obligation do we have? If these, if we create positions that are not defined in the current IBPO contract, such as a community policing lieutenant and an extra detective, remind, you're already at the contractual minimums with the detective. So if we make an extra detective, first off, the detectives are at our choosing or my choosing. And they serve with the hours at the discretion of the chief. And then the community policing lieutenant, we've already met our con- contractual obligations, filling the other lieutenant positions. So anything extra to that is at our discretion. Mr. Cavaza agreed. So if in the three to, if we agree, in the three to four years, we don't want to do this anymore, we just eliminate.
But that lieutenant would be in the contract.
The lieutenant, the position, for example, for sake of conversation, we pro- we promote Lieutenant Le Duke. We're not gonna take Lieutenant Le Duke's position away from him. But we'd reassign him, he would go on the road, and he would be another officer that would count towards the overall staffing.
Right. Um, okay, um, can I?
Get my head down of course.
Okay, um, first of all, on page six, the match amount would be from somewhere of a hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So, um, it's, we may be getting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but we have to match it by forty-two-point-six-six percent.
That's, that's over three years.
It's still a, a lot. Um, so then you have, um. I'm going to the different pages. I was noticing that, let's see, what page was that on? Sorry, thought I had it all here.
Okay, take your time.
Okay, um. Okay, got it yellowed here, yep. Um, the local match, um, you have to understand that it must be made on an increasing basis during each of the three-year award period with the federal share decreasing as we go along. So our costs would go up as the federals decreasing, sort of like when they make a mandate at the state, first it's a hundred percent, and then all of a sudden, you end up with the full cost of something or fifty percent of it. So I think we have to be very careful. Um, the other.
What page are you on?
Let's see, I'm on page twenty-one of twenty-five. I was going through this.
I got you, okay.
Yeah, so if you look at twenty-nine, um, the funding under this project is for the payment of three years of approved full-time entry-level salaries and fringe benefits during the five-year sixty-month period. So it ends at thirty, it ends at what, three years, but you're still kind of obligated for five years.
I am confused about that, Patrick, because I've.
I really, I really think we need to look at this because it can be a boondoggle of expense. And the first expense that happens is all of a sudden you're advancing two officers into another pay grade, so that's already a a tax issue for people. Um, and then it says the maximum federal share is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per uh officer position unless a local match waiver is approved. Any salary and fringe benefits cost higher than the entry level that your agency pays a, I'll say chip-funded officer must be paid with local funds. Your agency is required to use chip-awarded funds for the specific hiring categories awarded. Um, then we go to page um twenty-three. Retention. At the time of award application, your agency is committed to retaining all sworn officer positions awarded under the chip award with state and a local funds for a minimum of twelve months following the conclusion, which of course, um, the chief did mention. Um, conclusion of thirty-six months of federal funding for each position over and above the number of locally funded sworn officer positions that would have existed in the absence of the award. Your agency cannot satisfy the retention requirement by using chip-funded to fully locally funded vacancies resulting from attrition. And then thirty-four. Um, occasionally a change in the agency's fiscal or enforcement situation necessitates necessitates a change. Let's see, I'm just concerned with all the expense going forward here. Um, I I think we need a little more than discussing it online here. You really need to look at it. I'd really li- like uh to actually talk to Tim about what this is gonna cost because the the cost for the FEMA grant was so expensive. Uh, you can't just look at, oh, look, we're gonna get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's more than that. It's way more than that, and it's also, um, we do have a collecting collective bargaining a agreement. And we have so many officers, but within that, all of a sudden with these two officers that we're going to get, we're then moving, it it's almost, they're saying it's not part of the process, that they're completely separate, but yet, when you hire them, we're now moving people into another position which is costing the taxpayer money because they're now from, let's say, a lieutenant goes to a captain or a sergeant goes to a lieutenant. I hope I have that right, is in the right succession. Yeah, I eh I I just have a lot of, um, I I just have a lot of questions and I'm very concerned. Um, and I need them to do right by the taxpayers. I really need to have these answers eh answered, these questions answered. I really need to have the details of what it's gonna cost. Um, I I can't do it this way because I don't think it's fair to the taxpayer. Maybe it, maybe it is the right decision, but I really need more information. I need things answered. I need Tim to look at it. I need to talk to him. I need, I need more.
I do have a concern about our um share of it, because it is gonna increase, Patrick.
So, just to address the, and I know Counselor Cook wrote up the thirty-six and the sixty months in the sliding scales, but just a couple of issues to to clarify, which I do know. So it's one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year, up to seventy-five percent. The government knows that officers get pay raises. Also, the government knows that some officers, even pro, even entry-level officers, make more salary with benefits that exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Ours do not. So when it comes to that, it it's, there are some police officers that get hired with their salary salary and benefits. It exceeds one twenty-five. So when they're saying that it's gonna gradually shrink because the government puts a cap on it. So with ours, because right now, under the current collective bargaining, a probationary police officer, all-in, FICA, all the benefits, healthcare, it's eighty thousand. So the government would pay sixty thousand. That is right now. The other issue that you brought up, ma'am, about the sixty months is after the grant expires, we, the town,
Yeah.
Police Department is responsible for reporting out for an additional twenty-four months.
Right.
So it's not that you're on the hook, the town's not paying anything. I have to file reports based on the performance of the grant. And what did we do? How did we see? So that is just a performance measure. There is not anything associated with money with that. If we decide to end the program, I'm still gonna have to report out for an additional twenty-four months. If we keep the program, the government's gonna want to know how's the program going. That's all that is. There's there's, this is thirty-six months, one twenty-five. After the thirty-six months, it ends. So that's that, to address that sixty months, that five years, the reporting's different. But I also understand your concern, ma'am, about.
I have to answer to the taxpayers and I really need some answers. I have to feel comfortable with it. I have to be very comfortable with this, and I I don't right now.
Um, Council Edwards?
Chief, what's the award date on the letter?
Um, it was November eighteenth of.
Okay, so we're, we're already over the forty-five days. So did that get extended?
It did.
So what's the new one? What's the new date?
I, when I spoke to the Department of Justice, they understand that, you know, things like this happen, especially with COVID and the holidays. Um, and and I know, I mean, when we got awarded this grant, I got sent this email. And at ten o'clock in the morning, I think it was ten forty-nine, by twelve o'clock, they had already released it to the press. So it went that quickly that, you know, they didn't give us any chance. And I told them, knowing that we only had one council meeting in December, they have to give us more time to kind of vet this, you know, and talk about it, which they did. Um, I did get a notification from them today because they wanted to know, like, what's going on. So I told them that we were meeting and discussing for the first time tonight, and that I would update them more than likely this week, so we could talk about it.
So did they?
So I guess my question is, when must we decide?
I don't know. I can do, I can double-check with DOJ um and find out, like, what is a drop dead deadline for them. But I will say that they are pretty forgiving when it comes to um these matters, because they understand.
Well, here, here's part of the problem. You you've sort of mentioned this a bit, but really Saturday was when we got this package. So we've only had a couple of days to look at it, read it, think about it. We haven't been able to discuss it with anybody. One question I had was, when I went through the cost of a entry-level officer with benefits, correct me if I'm wrong, seventy-eight thousand eight hundred dollars? Times, so that's a hundred and sixty times three, I come up with four hundred and eighty. And that doesn't include the cost of promotions.
Correct.
Okay, so you have on here four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, which was an estimate, I take it.
Correct.
So based on that estimate and what we would have to pay, we're talking a minimum of sixty-two thousand a year.
Yeah.
Budget increase, but it's actually gonna be a little bit more than that. We just don't know yet.
Correct.
Okay. And when I went through this whole thing, it looked to me like in year three to four, that timeframe, you could backfill retiring officers with these newbies. Which you can't do during the thirty-six month period.
Correct.
And the other part of it was, you could not use how do I put this? You had to increase your budget. You could not use money that was already allocated.
You can't supplant, correct, sir.
Right.
But you're not gonna backfill though, because you're taking two out and making them lieutenant.
But like he said, th- they can always revert back to what you do, you know, root for.
They're not gonna revert.
We don't know that. Okay, so, my, my, my suggestion is, we're, we're, we're certainly probably should not make a decision on this tonight.
No, absolutely not.
At least wait until the next meeting, and if we could go a little longer than that, it would be nice, but we sort of need to know what the drop date, dead date is.
I can find out from the Department of Justice.
Uh, we don't want to lose it by default, but we also don't want to be stampeded into something.
To me, the bottom line is this is going to cost us. I'm very.
It's gonna cost us, period.
It's gonna cost us, period. And I think the decision the council needs to make is whether or not we want, we want to increase that budget. I think that's the question. And then I went through the whole Feynman's Grant. I went through that nightmare. So I'm a little cautious also because we found a lot of hidden costs in it as we really looked at it. So I'm I'm a little shy about this because of that experience.
I do. The only thing I will mention about the FEMA grants, and I'm not, not so much with the firefighter, but I know about the FEMA grants, is the difference with the FEMA grants compared to the cops grant is if you get a grant for three to four years, you need to keep whatever staffing you have for the length of the grant that you get. So if you got three years, if you got three years of money, you gotta keep them for three years. This one is different, that they only basically keep you there for twelve months.
Well, another thing that I have mentioned too is, with the way the police academy is, we we've got to find and train these two people.
Correct.
Plus, we've got to be able to refill positions if people retire, quit, or whatever happens. So it it could take us two or three years.
But it still has to be budgeted.
Yes.
Yes.
It still has to be budgeted.
You're both correct.
Right.
But if we don't use it, what do we do with that budget?
With the, if if we go unfilled, is that what you're saying, sir?
Yeah, if if we don't get somebody to the academy, we budgeted sixty-two thousand dollars for the year, where does it go at the end of the year?
The general fund.
Yes.
General fund. The grant's gonna pay for the two lieutenants.
Well, the grant will pay for, and so, just so we're clear about the the difference, and I know a lot of moving parts here. So the difference between a sergeant and a lieutenant's about three thousand dollars. So that promotion will happen within the department. The difference between a patrol officer and a detective, which is not a lieutenant, is it's three and a half percent. So it's actually maybe about thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred dollars, and I'm just right there. So that is the money. So all in to do the promotions were less than five thousand dollars, let's call it that, with the current staffing. What the grant will pay for is the replacement officers, so we can reassign these two current officers that we'd want to promote. And then the government would pay seventy-five percent of their salary and benefits.
The grant will be available until we promote them and and until we get them.
The grant will be available, the grant's actually available today.
But we can't spend it if we don't have those men there.
We can, we can spend it when we hire the officers and backfill them, yes.
Right.
Right, but that, like Jay said, that may take eighteen months.
If we have, if the plan would be if we started people in the academy in July, which would be the next one, their salaries would be paid for and compensated by the federal government grant, at least seventy-five percent of each of them.
Okay, yeah, I get it.
That's when we would start it.
And how about the extra ones we just hired? We just hired one extra, correct?
We did, but also that's part of an another issue that we're dealing.
Yeah, that, we know about that one.
Yes.
I don't, but okay.
All right, so like I said, uh, we we need to have a firm commitment date. And we need to know how much time we have to, you know, maneuver and hit this thing and have this discussion.
So Donna.
There's still some confusion.
What?
At, at the next meeting, would would you like me to invite Tim and he can give us?
Yeah, I, that's why we have him.
No, no, that's fine.
Yeah, we need to use him right now.
Right, so at the next meeting, we'll invite him to come and um give his, his opinion of all of this.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. Mike, did you have your hand up? Like, Mike, Mike.
Yeah, for a while, and I I have to give.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
I have to give feedback that this was a very one-sided discussion among council members. Um, so I just want to make that noted.
Well, no, I didn't see your hand up.
No, but but Denise, there were lots of times, I I think the conversation was too dominated in the front end for others to be able to engage in the discussion. That's all I'm saying. Um, so, um, one is, I I appreciate the cost uh discussion, but I also think we need to look at a cost-benefit analysis. Um, that, you know, what is this gonna get us? And Chief, you spoke a little bit about the Born Mill um concept. Um, I know that uh you reached out to Newport County, and at least one person from Newport County is here tonight. There's a lot of, everybody knows, a lot of the discussion nationwide is around issues related to police and how they interact with people in town, thankful in their communities. Thankfully, I don't see that as a negative in um Tiverton. I think we had, your force has um a lot of respect in the community and at the same time, part of that comes from that more progressive thinking about how can we continue to grow not in terms of numbers, but grow in terms of how we do things. How how can we branch out as best as we can using some additional resources if we need to to meet those needs, and you've identified the the mental health needs as a social worker. Um, I certainly understand that and appreciate that, um, and I think it's important for us um to do that. If if anyone's familiar with family service, um, they've had a long time relationship with Providence Police, um, where they go out on domestic violence calls, and their job is to help de-escalate that situation with the skills that they have as social workers, so that the police can focus on what their needs are, and also sees, folks see that collaborative effort. You know, so I know that's part of, I think, what you're, what you're looking for. Um, the other piece is, I I just want to ask, and you may not be able to answer this, but I would assume that part of the reason that we may have gotten this, at least, is because of the accreditation work. Um, I would assume that DOJ is much more um willing to take a shot at um, smaller departments especially, um, who are accredited over um ones who may not be accredited. Um, so I I appreciate this. I do think due diligence is necessary. At the same time, I think we need to keep our eyes on um what's going to help improve the public safety of our community. We all know the concerns raised around, you know, whether or not, I I for one. Um, and I've spoken to the chief about this, I think, yes, there are some issues that arise at a place like Born Mill because it's such a concentrated population. Um, but at the same time, if you look at a similar numbers of people in a broader area of town, and I don't think we have the data on this, so I shouldn't be speaking out of turn, but I would think you're gonna see similar issues within that population as well, in some other areas of town. So, I don't think it's just that Born Mill is a bad place, because I also know professionals who live there, um, and, and appreciate it there. So, I think that's a step in the right direction to be able to, to do that there and engage with the young people, um, as well, and, you know, looking at where else we might be able to, to do that. So, I, I thank you for at least bringing this to our attention and bringing this to us to consider, and we'll see what happens.
Thanks, sir, and I just wanna, uh, maybe I didn't state it well. The, the issue with Born, well, Born Mill is not because it is a problem. If anything, the reason why born, we're looking at Born Mill is because they wanna partner with us, because their, their progressive thinking matches our progressive thinking. They kinda wanna be a laboratory for us, and maybe a model for other affordable housing units in other areas that they have, um, in, in the state and in the area, so they enjoy the partnership that they have, and their residents enjoy the partnership, and the, and the fact that the police department is there, and not there to, you know, it just answer calls, but to form partnerships. We're already talking about having, regardless of what happens with the grant, homework clubs, um, with the, with the population there, Community Citizens Police Academy, all of those things, we're going to do no matter what, because we're welcome to do it and we wanna do it. This grant would only facilitate to help make it easier and push it further, that's all.
So, I think this is a twofold issue, it's, one is policy, and whether or not we wanna initiate this program. And secondly is the grant. And that's why it's confusing right now, because we got them, we have the grant money, but I think the council has to decide if this is a worthwhile, worthy project to go forward in. So, you have to think of, am I making sense?
Yeah.
It's, it's, yeah, it's two issues here. Um, it's policy, and it's whether or not we want to budget. And that's part of creating a policy, is what is this policy gonna cost us? Uh, Bill, did you wanna say something? You're the only one that hasn't said anything.
Good evening, Chief, good evening Sergeant, thank you for being here tonight. Um, costs are always a concern, raising a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget and try, and trying to get that through the Budget Committee, maybe, uh, you know, may, maybe an, uh, maybe an issue, maybe not, um. I share Counselor Cook's, some of her concerns, I, I think she needs to know a little bit more, so I tried to be a little bit quieter and let her, um, comprehend the situation, but I think how do we not afford this, um, two officers for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, who will outreach both those with emotional issues, um, and those that just appreciate Sergeant Laduke and all his efforts, and, and everyone's efforts over the past year. Um, how do we not afford this? So, um, thank you Counselor Burke for, uh, for weighing in on the other side, I, I echo your sentiment, and, uh, I, I, I hope we can get to some kind of resolution at, at, at the next meeting, thank you.
Chris, I saw your hand up.
Oh, first of all, I wanna applaud the Chief for actually applying for this, because he applied for something to progressively take care of two specific needs that we're really not achieving today. Uh, and we're trying to get the federal government to pay for seventy-five percent of this. Um, and what hasn't been said, and I know you're concerned about the budget being increased, we could pay for the twenty-five percent share with the American Recovery Month. Um, it is not, well, there is three point two million dollars of lost revenue that we can use for any particular governmental purpose. It would take some decision by the council to offer to do that, instead of taxing people. Um, so there are options other than just taxing. Um, there is a very significant need for these issues to be addressed. Um, if we don't address them, then if we decide not to do this grant, these issues are just not gonna be taken care of, that they're gonna languish like they languished today. So, I applaud the Chief for applying for this, because I think he was trying to resolve an issue in a very progressive manner, uh, and try to minimize the impact on our taxpayers. Um, I, I think it's, you know, when you look at each officer to start off with being eighty thousand dollars a year all in, and at twenty-five percent, you know, what, it's not a big lift for the town to do this, especially if we're gonna use the American Recovery Months.
So, the American Recovery Moneys we can use for the three years?
We can use it for two of the three. Now, they've extended every other program beyond those two-year per- periods, so it's potentially that we could get a third year.
Right, okay. Um, anyone else wanna weigh in?
Just one final, one final thought, bear in mind, when you're looking at page six, under approved budget, that's the total cost over three years.
Yes.
So, divide those numbers by a third when you're talking budget.
I did.
Okay.
I did.
And the other thing is, yes.
You won.
Yes, the fourth year, we will bear the full cost, but there are bound to be attritions, and we would simply go back to our normal complement.
I did divide it, and it's sixty-two thousand, around sixty-two thousand.
So, when you're thinking cost, just keep that in mind, and as, as Counselor Burke said, you need to do a cost benefit analysis, and personally, I think the benefits outweigh the cost. But that's, we can have that discussion later.
So, what is the council's pleasure? Do you wanna put this table into the next meeting? Us, Tim, to come and weigh in on if this will affect the contract in any way? Or do you, it's up to you?
We, we do, we do have two counselors who haven't weighed in, so I guess tabling, yeah, if, if this, if the chief agrees that a deadline is not imminent, um, there are two other counselors who haven't weighed in, so I, maybe, maybe it is important that they weigh in also.
Chris?
Yes, if we, if we're gonna ask Tim to weigh in, could we please at least get him in advance the questions that you have?
Sure.
So that he's not, you know, waiting here that night to, it is what it is, I just think the more advanced notice he has of your concerns, the easier it will be for him to facilitate answering your concerns.
So, she could be able to come prepared.
Sure. Um, anyone else?
No, I agree, are we taking any comments from the audience tonight?
Um, I was not going to, but is there anybody?
So, when we started, there was the fellow Stephen who wanted.
Oh, I, I'm very sorry, yes.
And I think Rebecca's probably here for that, and I know Stu Gilfillon had, um, that's why he came in, I don't know about others.
I thought Stu was here for something else in the, um, so is Steve here?
I could bring him in, Steve, what was his last name?
Fisher, I saw him just now and I lost him.
Hang on, his attendees, that's why.
Oh, here he is, I got him.
You let him in?
No, you let him in.
All right. Again.
Did I just let him in?
I, I have no idea.
I think I did.
All right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's the first night again, okay.
No, it's fine.
I just wanted to read a, a quick statement of, uh, in regards to what you're discussing. If you wouldn't mind. Okay, my wife Mary and I have lived in Tiverton since nineteen eighty-five. Before that, we lived in Newport, Middletown, and Portsmouth, as we pursued our careers in the Navy, both military and civilian. I bring this up because we are not lifelong residents, and so have experienced society in other communities and can make comparisons of life in each. I'm sure quality of life is at the top of the list of factors for where we all eventually settle down. When we first ar- arrived here in Tiverton, was a sleepy little town out of, out our way, and we enjoyed the peace and quiet. Over the years, it has gotten busier and noisier, but remains a caring, loving community. Having retired in two thousand eighteen, we found ourselves with time on our hands and a desire to give back to the community we've come to love. The senior center and the Tiverton Police have provided us with many opportunities to volunteer on many outreach projects geared to servicing the needs of our citizens. It is this collaboration that has made us realize the good hearts and deeds being performed by our police officers. What I am, what am I trying to say here? I'm saying that as a result of the few chances I had to assist their efforts, it made me realize the growing need our town has for a community outreach program in our police department. When I was in the Navy, I used to say that the two hospital ships did more for our status among nations than in our motto of ship patrolling the seas. An out, an, an outreach program as a branch of our police department would do much the same good. They do so much already on a limited basis. I have personally witnessed lonely shut-in seniors being fed and looked in on, needy kids having a decent Christmas, safe drivers being recognized, child car seats checked for correct installation, and numerous other noble endeavors to promote good in our town. This is all just a smidgen of what could be accomplished full-time. I understand funds have come available that could make this all a reality. So, many of our businesses and community have already gotten behind these efforts and would wholeheartedly endorse and vote to support the creation of this outreach program, and so much more, I urge you to support this proposal, thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Stephen, um, I believe we met at the Veterans Luncheon, um, your wife and you were there, I believe, so, um, again, thank you for coming forward tonight, and, uh, um, I believe you were both medics, thank you also for your service.
Navy Corps, I'm proud of it.
Retired Navy, proud of it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Stephen, very much.
Thank you very much for your time. And I, I really do hope that, uh, you guys can approve this, I think the funds would be well spent helping out in the community, like I said, I've only been involved in a few outreach uh, projects with the Tiverton Police, but I'm just amazed that the good it does in the community, and I don't think that you can put a price tag on, on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Uh, Rebecca, where are you? There you are. Would you like to say something?
I would, thank you, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak to all of you tonight. Um, I've had a conversation with the Chief about this grant, um, let me introduce myself first. Uh, Rebecca L O L, CEO of Strategic Prevention Partnerships, and the Director of the Newport County Prevention Coalition. Uh, I just wanted to share a few thoughts with you and, and recognize the fact that I'm fortunate not to have to make the budgetary or policy decisions. Um, what I can represent is the community perspective. Um, and just a couple of really quick stats that I think would be helpful. Rhode Island adults have the highest rate of mental illness in the United States at twenty-four percent, and are more likely to report unmet behavioral health needs than adults in any other New England state. One in five Newport County adults suffers from untreated behavioral health disorders, that's mental health or substance use. Suicide in our county is the second leading cause of death among young adults, and overdoses remain at an epidemic proportion and are increasing. These statistics were prior to COVID, and we know that the numbers have only increased. The connection to this grant, and the reason why I'm bringing these statistics out, is that this grant gives law enforcement, our Tiverton Police Department, the opportunity to make meaningful and transformative change in the way that they meet community needs. Our officers are sworn to protect and serve. Opportunities to expand skills in addressing mental health, substance misuse, suicide, those are important ways to protect and serve, and it lays the foundation for upon which our future opportunities can be built. If COVID has taught us anything, it is that many of our community members are suffering from mental health, addiction, domestic violence, all born out of the experiences that people have faced over the past few years, whether it's food insecurity, health concerns, fire, loss of income, change of, um, school schedules and expectations, isolation, fear, and loneliness. These factors have presented trauma, often untreated, and occasionally self-treated through drugs and alcohol. When these untreated concerns turn to crisis, it often turns into a call to law enforcement. This grant opportunity for our officers not to be increased, um, by two officers, there's promotions, et cetera, but that this department will be the forerunner, at least in Newport County, to looking for those innovative ways of building relationships that are going to have an effect, um, on our community as a whole. It provides new skills and opportunities for the de-escalation trainings that are so vital when our law enforcement folks are being called out, not to deal with crime, not a, you know, not a robbery or a, a traffic violation, but a call because a loving family member just is at the end of their rope and needs to call someone, because a family member or someone that they love is having a mental health crisis. Our officers show up. It would be so vitally important if they have the training, the self-assurance, it's all of the, the factors that are gonna come in to de-escalating a mental health crisis, or having someone who can back them up, who does have that experience. It is my deepest wish that the council look beyond the cost, the potential, um, future liabilities regarding having additional officers on the, in the ranks. Um, take this Department of Justice grant that will provide resources and support that they may broaden the approach that Tiverton Police Department can take to better serve the residents of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Um, is someone else that Chris you?
So, Paige J has her hand up, so I'm assuming she wanted to speak.
Yes, please. Um, thank you for taking the time to listen, um, to what I have to say. A little background before I read, um, what I wrote is that, um, I've been a Tiverton resident for eighteen years. Um, I had a past of substance abuse and mental illness, and, you know, recently learning that the mental illness comes from substance abuse has been huge, and I wouldn't have had those resources and that help without, um, you know, people in my com- community, um, especially Sergeant Laduke. Um, I also do wanna say that I'm twenty-seven years old, and I did hear one of the council members say, you know, she was concerned about taxpayers' money. I just wanna clarify that young taxpayers, this is what we want. We want our community to be strong, we want our kids to be safe, and I, this is my first council meeting, so, um, seeing lack of, you know, my years in our council meetings has opened my eyes to realize that this is a huge issue. Um, and I'm just gonna read, um, what I have written, if you don't mind. Um, with a population of sixteen thousand plus people and growing in Tiverton as of two thousand twenty, there is no better time than now to conduct a special police unit solely based to help our community. In two thousand, there was a recorded six thousand plus households in which thirty percent of those households had children under the age of eighteen. There was, that was over twenty years ago. Today, we are lucky enough to have Sergeant John Laduke as part of our Tiverton Police Department to help make sure our community is able to get the resources needed. I met Sergeant Laduke three years ago due to a call from a noise complaint for my children running around. At the time, having two to three officers show up at my door for a noise complaint was very overwhelming, and I wasn't sure how to behave but in, be in defense when explaining myself. Sergeant Laduke was the first to reassure me he was in complete understanding, as he has four children of himself. In that moment, Sergeant Laduke became a human to me. It was no longer the Tiverton Police Department versus Paige, it was Sergeant Laduke making an effort to show he means no harm and he's just doing his job. That summer, I had ran into Sergeant Laduke again. He came to play basketball with my kid, with the kids at Apple Creek Apartments. Soon enough, the kids were asked Soon enough, the kids were asking about his truck and equipment that he carried. They sat in awe as he was explaining every piece of equipment and what he does for his job. By the end of his explanation, all the kids were asking him for his autograph. I would say he's a local celebrity around here, if you will. My kids still ask to this day when they can beat him in basketball again. Without his outreach, I wouldn't care or respect the community as much as I do now. Imagine how many other lives he could change if he had more time to focus on the community outreach. Since then, Sergeant Le Duke has held multiple events in, for the children in our community, including Summer Safety Day, where he got together sponsors at the Longplex and showed kids the importance of seatbelt and bike safety. He hosted National Night Out, where he also incorporated backpack and school supplies giveaway and a movie night for kids and families. And most recently, he held Operation Blue Santa, an adopt a family program where he helped over 100 struggling families and matched them to people who were willing to adopt them in Tiverton. I was one of those families. Last year, he was also able to take the time to deliver my children's first Christmas tree in our new home, thanks to a generous local business donation. Now, as exhausting as it was to listen to me explain everything Sergeant Le Duke does, I didn't even begin to touch the surface of all the detail that goes into every single event he puts together with the help of our community. I personally know he has reached out to small businesses in our community to help sponsor these events. Not only are our businesses in full support of helping our community, but I am more than sure they would be on board with having a separate unit in the police department focused on only community outreach. Imagine the difference that would make if Tiverton Police Department was able to build a better relationship with the community and build the trust that is needed for the community to run smoothly. With constant housing and low-income housing proposals for Suser Road and surrounding areas being brought to the town council, it is important that we focus on strengthening the relationship that the Tiverton Police Department currently has with the community before we welcome people from other towns and states into Tiverton. The benefit of the Tiverton Police Department having a separate community policing unit would offer more time for the officers to do more outreach, including follow-up on police calls that include neighborly conflicts or domestic issues that may otherwise be overlooked by our small police department. If ever for a second you have considered in the past housing proposals, I ask that you think about all the conflicts that will arrive with that. We don't want our small town to have big city issues and our residents' voices to not be heard. I want to know that my three kids will grow up in a community that backs each other up and that these kids have other things to do other than getting into trouble. As a Tiverton resident for almost 20 years, I am asking that we approve a separate community policing unit within our police department and put our town's money into something that will actually benefit the residents of Tiverton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paige.
Thank you, Paige. Um. All right, um.
You have two other hands up in the audience. I see.
I don't know if we should just keep continuing this though. It's maybe we should table this to another meeting and then other people can talk then. We're running, we have a lot more of this agenda to do. And if we're going to table it, then we can do it then. What do you all think?
Well, probably if we're going to do this again in another meeting, it probably would make sense to finish the commentary up then before you do the vote.
Right.
Um, I'm happy with having them talk tonight, but I leave that to my colleagues. They can bring them in. It's up to the rest of us.
If we do that, then we're going to have to table a bunch of other stuff.
Yeah, we're getting late here, guys. Um.
Can we make a motion?
Yes, make a motion, please. I, I don't really want to say what I'm thinking right now, so could somebody make one?
I, I make a motion that unless Chief Jones tells us that time is of the essence, that we table further discussion on this topic until our next meeting, which would be January 24th.
Yep.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. I'll second it. Donnie, you're on Neil.
I, I went to say I'd second it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know you did. I saw you. All right, any further discussion? I, I feel I need to say this. In the future, I would really have liked this to have been brought to us before the grant was proposed or during the time that the grant was there um, being decided so that we'd have more time and we weren't at a deadline like this. Like I said, and I really do believe this, this isn't about the grant. It's really about whether or not we want to, we want this program. And I think a discussion should have been had before this. Um, not that I'm saying I'm against this program. I just think that giving us this short notice where we really don't have a time to really vent this as much as we should have. Uh, because like Chris said, there's other fundings available, there's other ways to go around this. And just in the future, I don't know if the rest of you agree with me, but if the department heads are going to apply for a grant that really involves a policy change, we should know about it a little bit more in advance so that we can vet this better. Um, so I have a motion on the floor and a second. Um, all those in favor? Mike, Councilor Burke?
No, only because I would have listened to the other two phone.
Council Vera?
I'm going to say no.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And also I think that the other councillors should be here to hear any further discussion because they're going to have to make this decision also. All right, Chris, I was going to move on, but go ahead.
I'm, I'm just going to, the two people were Ed and Stu. Could you please come to the January 24th meeting to voice your opinion then? Um, and we'll definitely record, whoop. I thought I just lost the whole meeting.
No, we're all.
I hate it when I minimize things. So I just wanted them to know that we would definitely extend their discussion when it's your January.
And, and hopefully, Council Janik and Council Perry will be present because I think it's important that all seven of us weigh in and I know that Bill brought that up. And I think that that is a good point. Donna, you have your hand raised?
I don't think so.
Yeah, you do. Either that or you're waving to me, Donna. I'm not sure, but your hands up.
No, I, I, I just, I just have to say that, um, having read this on a Sunday, I felt, I, I felt it was a little unfair and it was something that's so important. And, you know, discussions for or against, I feel pressured on something that there's many questions for me and I have, I, I really, you know, not saying one way or the other, whether it's bad or good or anything, but it always does come down to what it costs or, or I, you know, people are, are, can't afford their homes anymore. There's always a given to take, but anyway, um, I, I, I just need more information. Thank you for tabling it till the next time so the other two councillors can also take part. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Patrick, is it brief? Because I want to move on.
I want to be very brief. I want to thank the council for their consideration. And we can definitely talk about it and I'll find, as you've asked me to, through the Department of Justice, see if I can get an extension. And Madam President, just to your concern, this was meant as no disrespect to you or the council about applying for this, and I can understand all of your concerns about just the deadlines. But as you know, I applied for this in the summer. I got that November 18th. We were into the Thanksgiving. I think we've had one, one or two council meetings since then. So it was, that's just how unfortunately with these grants, how they move. I gave you the notification as fast as I possibly can, but I understand your concerns and they're valid. And I'll make, I'll make an effort to hopefully do a little better in the future so I can get you as much information as I possibly can so we can avoid this.
No, it's, I, I commend you for getting it, Patrick, but maybe at the, maybe in the summer, we should have talked about whether or not we wanted to do this program, but it's okay. Um. I'm going to move on if that's all right with everyone.
Okay, one comment before you leave. Sergeant Le Duke, I want to thank you for all you do. And it's a lot.
And John, I said that at the beginning and, and believe me, I do respect the work you do every day. Thank you. Um, Town Administrator Kears, act funding update?
So I have Denise right here with me as well, just in case you have any questions of her, but I'm going to.
Did she fall asleep? Oh, here she is.
Let me see if I can summarize this issue as quickly as I can and succinctly. So the state on behalf of all communities back in December of 2020 had applied for the CARES funding through the federal government on behalf of all cities and towns. And there was a decision made at that point in time that they were going to apply for the funds predicated on the fact that all public safety funding that was budgeted, not, not grant-funded, but, but budgeted, would be justification to receive the grant funds in and of itself. So the CARES money could be justified by the fact that we had public safety expenditures. Because most of those public safety expenditures at that time were pretty much dedicated for a lot of COVID-related matters, in addition to many others. But COVID was being handled by our, you know, EMS, our firefighters, our police and on a variety of different venues. So that in, in fact justified the formulary on why we got $450,000. So the guidance for this particular CARES grant that we received wasn't written until two months after it was applied for. So the intent of all city-town managers at that time was yes, go ahead, apply for the money, but we will utilize the money in accordance to the guidance that is issued by the federal government. And that's what we did. We did a number of different things over the period of when it was applied for, received, deposited. And because of a lot of the other issues we were dealing with financially, we tried to be as frugal and financially astute as possible to maximize the use of these funds. So the program did get extended until December 20, 31st of 2021. So that's why I came before you back in early November to make an allocation to expand these funds in accordance with the guidance. And I believe that program has now subsequently been pushed into FY 2022, um, because there are many people in the same boat as we are. Because of how we dealt with this money, um, when we went to go close out our financial statements for FY 2021, the state's Department of Revenue in their infinite wisdom decided to say that we didn't allocate the CARES money in accordance with our MTP, which I believe is our municipal transparency portal allocation, the way that they expected it to be done and that they thought that we were spending that money by June 30th of 2021. So logically, if you think about this, we applied for the money in December. We got the guidance in late February, early March, and they expect us to spend the money in three months. That just doesn't fly and, but they really wanted us to adjust our FY 21 financials out and account for the money the way that they applied for it, which would have been just public safety salaries and benefits. That in fact would have caused us to create a supplanting problem. So it created, created a friction between DOR and our office. The treasurer kind of agreed with what I had presented all along. We ran it by our auditors. Our auditors agreed that what we'd done, they've read all the guidance. They know the program inside and out because they're dealing with every other city and town. They agreed that we've handled this money properly. So we ultimately had to have, and I wasn't sure that, because when this all came about, it was the last week of December. And we were going to have to have some adjustment made if DOR was adamant to stand their ground. So that's why I asked the Council President to hold a special meeting because at some point we were going to have to make a decision on how we were going to handle these monies differently than what we originally intended. Ultimately, Department of Revenue, our auditors, our town treasurer and the state auditor general had a meeting. And this whole thing got hashed out and discussed thoroughly. And they agreed that we were right in the way that we were handling it. That money has now been cleared out of our FY 21 so that we didn't have to report it as of June 30th of 2021. We can, it's now coming as a special revenue account or an assigned revenue account. And we, we are allowed to expand it in accordance with the guidance. Now, you know, we can go back and expand it the way that I originally intended it, you know, that I presented to you. It's clear in the guidance and Jay, unfortunately, when I gave you that paper this morning and showed you some of those, you took it home with you. I don't want to have.
Oh, I thought you meant me to keep it.
No, that was my only copy.
I'll bring it back to you.
I get another one from Denise tomorrow. But Jay can attest to the fact that the guidance is clear, unambiguous, that the radio communications, the ambulance, the overtime, the PPE, all that are all municipal expenses.
And then black and white.
It, it is clearly in black and white. And I don't know if Denise, if there's anything that I've missed or something you think that I should, you know, needs to be clarified, please weigh in.
Um, no, I think you've covered it pretty well. Um, it, it was just a matter of, I think the state wanted it one way because that's how, you know, they formulated their application. And I think they're going to find as, and we were early reporting our audit. So we, I swear, we were like a guinea pig, but anyway, be that as it may. Um, I think they're going to find that other communities were pretty much in the same boat that we were. But we were able to come to an agreement and report it so that everybody was happy. And that was why, Chris, we decided that, you know, the meeting didn't, we didn't have to have a special meeting the week of New Year's.
Right. So that's the update I wanted to give you on why we did what we did. But we did get some validation that the way that we were going about it was completely appropriate. So unfortunately, different people have different perspectives as to what should have transpired. But at the end of the day, we have to manage the money the way that we see best fit and our, our auditors agreed with our decision-making, so.
We should thank you both.
I, I do have to give Denise a lot of credit. She, believe me, I thought there was a mushroom cloud that went off downstairs. But she did really good. She got, she got everybody corralled and got this. So it was done appropriately. It is well within our financials. It is appropriately transacted and our, our financial statements are fine. So.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to move on.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Denise. I'm sorry you had to wait so long.
No problem. Have a good night.
You too.
So we did I already, so we're onto Jay.
Yep, yep, I know. Solicitor Marcelo Jansen, National Opiate Settlement Update?
So this is just a quick update. Um, near the end of the holiday season, near the end of December, uh, we got notification from the Department of Attorney General that Tiverton uh, needed to sign some documents as a part of their settlement of the Jansen opioid settlement. As you recall, there are a number of cities and towns who joined a national litigation. Uh, we were not one of those towns, however. Uh, on behalf of the state, as part of the, the agreement that the state came with, that some of this money is going to be distributed to cities and towns. And the more cities and towns sign on to it, even though they not, weren't part of the lawsuit, the more money the state will get. So, um, I believe, I think in the fall, the council had already previously given me the authority to make, make sure that all the settlement agreements were executed properly. Um, I, I did speak with the council president because it was kind of a rush and she gave me the authority to sign on behalf of the town. Uh, so we're expecting about $100,000 or maybe $120,000 with this tranche of settlement. Um, and it can only be used for drug introduction, outreach programs. There's a bunch, there's a bunch of programs that can be used, money that can be used for. Um, we'll get, there's, there's actually two, two tranches of money. One is each city and town is going to get money directly. And then there's 80% of the funds are going to go to the state and the state is going to be doling out other, other funds uh, to cities and towns with an emphasis on prevention, outreach, those kind of issues. And we're hoping that some of the smaller towns will bond together and use their modest funds to, you know, maybe have like a regional program or something like that. That's all I really have to say.
Or this could help with the grant that we were just talking about.
I was just going to ask, could, could that be you? You said the magic word outreach.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's, I think it's how we related to opioid, you know, drug use, that kind of stuff. I'm not sure.
Well, that's what.
It's part of this program.
It couldn't be. It has not, I don't think the final, the final guidelines have not come out yet.
It could be the magic bullet, though.
Could be. That's all I have. Thank you. So I just wanted to let you know that, so even though Tiverton was not part of the original litigation, we did sign off on the paperwork so that we will get some money.
Okay. Di Madera's discussion regarding Councilor Cook resignation from Union Contract Negotiation Team. I think me and Chris received the letter from Donna. She has resigned from um the negotiation teams. Which Donna, I'm disappointed because I felt like you were a valuable member um during the time that I was um with you on these teams.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um Jay is our third person. He was there as an observer to learn during the police and Jay, I'm sorry, but you've learned enough. Now now you have to join me. If that's okay with everybody.
May God have mercy on your souls.
I think they enjoyed it. Um and he, you know, he did contribute, of course, you know, Jay. He contributed to it and his knowledge on the Budget Committee with um the different budgets was very helpful also. So if it's all right with you, just uh with all of you, it'll be me and Jay. Is that?
A a quick note, Madam President, um I would add, like we do with the other commissions, accepting your resignation, Donna, with regret from these because I do think you are have been valuable and and certainly have grown to know the details of of the contracts and the process. So I also want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
So we are we gonna vote to accept? Well, it's not on here to accept it.
Interesting information. You guys, if you want to formally appoint Jay at the next meeting, you can do that. I don't know how you usually work that out. So.
Well, we we had appointed him as a third, so we'll just have a second. And if anybody else is interested in joining us, uh it's certainly another uh counselor can join us now. So if anyone is interested, just contact me and I'll put it on the agenda. Okay.
This this means I can talk, right?
Yes, you can talk. Well, you talked last time too, Jay. No one can stop you from talking, Jay. And um and I'll mention it to um Councillor uh Councillor Janik and um and uh why can't I like Counselor Perry?
Yeah.
In case they would like to join. Okay. All right, moving on. Mobile uh mobile food establishment ordinance discussion and possible vote to advertise draft ordinance for the public hearing, February fourteen, twenty twenty two. Uh we have to advertise it for three weeks. That's why we brought it to you now. It gives um all of us three weeks to look at it, uh also for that hearing. I don't know if there's any discussion or if you just want to move forward and bring it to public hearing. Mike, you look like you want to ask something.
Well, I mean, I have a bunch of questions, but if we um want to do those at the public hearing with this one, I'm fine.
Yeah, just so you know, um cities and towns were required to adopt this ordinance in December of nineteen ninety, December two thousand, I believe, was the last date.
So what's another three weeks, Mike?
I wanted to slow through at the time.
Quickly, Mike, is this a model ordinance that we're expected to adopt? That will answer some of my questions.
Uh it is a model to the extent it 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 I would say eighty eighty percent of it mo- models state is a is a retread of state law. Uh the other twenty percent is kind of a fill in and the model for this ordinance actually came from East Province. So I did a little. The two things that you need to decide uh or, you know, there's there there are two things. Uh the the first of all, they're no longer, we uh we're not going to be able to license using the hawkers and peddlers uh uh as we do now. Uh and the maximum fee that the the license that the state has set was seventy five dollars for cities and towns. So mobile food establishments have to get uh they have to get a certificate from the state. And once they get the state uh that's the certificate, uh they just actually literally have to come to the town with that certificate uh and fill out an application and the town's going to give them, you know, gives them a license. So there's not, there's no longer any really local regulation as to whether or not a valid establishment or not. The other thing is it's an option is that you, in addition to the seventy five dollar fee, which is per truck, uh if you want, if if, for instance, uh you the town has like a special event uh where you expected a lot of people, I'm trying to think of that uh that. If you want to, if you want to, uh if if you want food trucks to ha- have to uh have a license for that event or some similar event, um you can, you can charge them up to three hundred bucks for a special permit for for large events. You don't have to have that. You don't have to, but it's, I put it in there um and I, you you can take it out, you know, after a public hearing. And then there's just other stuff about, you know, where they can park and how they, you know, what they can do and what they could have a trash receptacle and all that kind of good stuff. So.
Um now, the right now that they are required to get the state's certification anyway.
Correct.
So they're getting that anyway.
Correct.
And because we didn't have the policy, while the ordinance, we uh were using the pet as peddler's license, but that was the reason because we didn't write write down because we didn't have this policy. But the food truck, a couple of food truck people had called me in the past and I know they are getting the state's certificate um already. So it's nothing new for them.
So when they get the state's certificate, they almost by right have the we discuss this like the the truck at Grinell Beach.
Right, right.
But they can't unless they have this local certificate, they're not really supposed to operate within the town.
Right, it's a diff- yeah, but we weren't doing that because we didn't have.
Correct, correct.
Um, Mike, is it all right if we?
We can go on. Can I just ask one last? Like hours of operation, is that by state law, six AM to midnight?
Um that's the, I think that's the maximum, Mike, so you can probably shorten that.
All right, all right. Thanks.
As well as I will, I'll be perfectly honest, as well as the requirement that um and this was more of a issue in East Province and it might be in Tiverton. But, you know, we we also limited their location to, you know, from a brick and mortar store like three hundred feet. They can't be like, you know, outside a restaurant's door, basically.
That's in here already.
Yeah, I know, but I was just saying, that's 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 not.
That's why it's there, yeah.
That that's why it's there. That's not in the statute, but that's, yeah.
All right, so um I like to.
If anybody has any question between now and then, if you want to send me an email about it, but that's fine. And I think the public hearing will be pretty interesting, so.
All right, um so I'd like to entertain a motion to advertise for the draft ordinance for the public hearing for February fourteenth, twenty twenty two.
Give it to those two.
Counselor Viera and Second Counselor Edwards. And we'll be doing this on Valentine's Day. All right. Short term ordinance, um short term rental. Short term rental ordinance. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting tired, obviously. Counselor Burke.
Yes.
Counselor Viera.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
An amiable.
Oh, and can and Counselor Edwards. I was doing good up to this point. All right, I'll try to perk up again.
You hit the wall, Denise.
Yeah, I think I did at some point. Well, to keep in mind, I get up at four o'clock every morning. Um short term rental ordinance discussion and possible vote to refer draft ordinance to the planning board.
Oh, this is the uh, I'm sorry, this is the final, this is the after all the input. And I think right before the holidays, Chris and I, we met with the building official and the uh zoning official, I believe, to go over some of the last pieces, which was the enforcement piece of this. Uh they didn't really have any concerns with it. I think Rick, I think Rick Rogers also sent me an email indicating you have any problems with the enforcement. So because this is a a a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, uh it has to by 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 law, has to go to the planning board for their recommendation uh and its consistency with the comp plan. Uh you may have heard that the LaRan Legislature uh recently overrode a governor's veto regarding the registration of uh short term rentals with the Department of Business Regulation. All that is is a registration requirement. It does, has nothing to do with, you know, where they can be located or not or not. Uh it it but it will help the town because uh there'll be a registration code that will be assigned to Tiverton. And when they sign up, they're going to have to identify what town they're in. So you'll will know uh be those people who comply with that provision will will know where all the short term rentals are. So that will be helpful. But this this requires uh people to get a special use permit. Uh if it passed as uh before before the zoning board for them to opera- operate a short term rental. Uh we took out some of the stuff that the council uh did not like in the official uh in the initial drafts. Um again, this is um, this is not, I mean, we hopefully this will be the final version, depending what the planning board has to say. Uh but there still will be more opportunity to amend this at a later date. But I think it's, I think it's got ninety five percent of what people expected. And I know it's not an easy thing, uh but it's probably a uh just a reminder, it's the, it's my position right now that if you're operating a sh- short term rental in any zone uh right now, it's a, you're basically operating a business in a residential zone and it's not really permitted in our zoning code.
Any questions from the council?
Madam President?
Yes. Oh, I have a bunch of hands up. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, um a couple of things. One, I just need some clarification. The copy I have is a little hard to read, so. On uh the registration section item, um section four, I think it's one registration application required. On that last A under it is the second part of that sentence, the provisions of this section inclusive. Is that the word?
I'm sorry, where's that? Where where are you looking? I'm just.
So I'm looking at the second page. Um so the first page is the zoning uh districts. The se- the the second page, um it says section four and then it says A, B, and then the number one. Um at the bottom, number one, it says A again. Um and then the the second line there um is kind of cut off. The provisions of this section, is that inclusive or?
Yeah, in 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 sorry, I believe it's inclusive.
Okay, okay.
I I can double, I'll get you guys a better copy, but I I thought, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I guess it didn't scan well. I thought we had a better version of this, but yeah.
No, that's that's fine. Um second concern I have is um I I'm not even ready for this to go to the planning board without a parking requirement myself, unless the council votes otherwise.
Yeah, we we talked about, we we talked about that and Bill Vier uh called me today about that as well. Um the 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 way that we so the parking is going to be limited to occupancy and it's kind of hard to point point, it's a special use permit. The zoning board would be able to put their own restrictions on it. So in other words, it's hard to put a blanket parking requirement on every parcel because you don't know what every parcel looks like. So Bill said, told me about some parcels on the waterfront uh that there really is no parking whatsoever. So parking can be linked to occupancy, but we kind of have to leave that up to the zoning board, I think. Or at least on the application where we could li- limit it by the uh by the building official at the time that an application is 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 filled.
So I mean, off street parking, that's what I'm talking about. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, you're saying, I mean, you could, you could certainly say there's no off street parking whatsoever, but then you're gonna, you're gonna take away. I don't have any, you you're gonna, you might, you might not be, then you might not allow people that don't have any parking to not have a short term rental and I understand.
I I understand that. Um I just think that it also interferes with the people in the um neighborhood who may not want tons of other cars there. So for me, that's a bit of a deal breaker. Um I'm also concerned, and I know we talked about, we we gave you feedback on taking out the owner occupancy. But I've also heard more feedback from folks about the concern of um companies or even individuals buying up multiple properties um just for the purpose of doing short term rentals. And some people will argue, well, that's not an issue um that Tiverton needs to worry about. What I would argue that other communities didn't think was going to be an issue for them too, and it became an issue. And that in and of itself affects our affordable housing. Um so I'm not sure about that one, how we can do it. Um but that's a concern. Chris, I have a question for you on that same first section. Um with the registration being valid from January one to December thirty first, which basically means all applications are coming in at the same time. Did the uh staff who have to deal with all of that, were they concerned at all about the capacity to do that in that short period of time? As opposed to staggering it based on when you get your permit?
So as staff, we haven't really talked about that. Um it's because I really don't have staff to deal with this at the moment. Um it will probably be me. Um but I I at the moment, because of the number of them that's been conceived or touted, I don't think it's a big deal. Um but, you know, we during during the time that this comes back for, because it is going to have to come back for public hearing, correct? It could be corrected by then, but that's, you know, I I I'm not sure what to do with this at the moment. I think that that hopefully I get some vetting as it goes back to the planning board as to how many we're looking at here, uh what the volume really is. Because I also have other concerns about some of the reporting of income that we're we're not getting anything from the state as to who's 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 reporting what.
Well, you will now with the registration at some point, with state law.
They're still claiming that they won't tell us uh that there is a registration process, but they're still claiming it's tax information and they won't give us the information that the dog by by entity. So we have no way to reconcile what's happening in town versus our registrations.
Then also under two on that page, designation responsibilities. At the bottom, it talks about upon uh local representative shall respond immediately in person upon request of the Tiverton Police Department. Do we want to limit it to police or we want to include fire? Um, or we just assume the police are going to call?
So it it I I would think it would be both because uh if there is a faulty um CO or smoke alarms or those kind of things, the I don't think that's a police call.
Right.
But it would uh it would be applicable for a special.
Yeah, so you might have to add that. And then at the top of the next page, it's um the non emergency numbers for the different police and fire department in addition to the four one one emergency call center. Should that be nine one one?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then under enforcement by zoning official approval of use advertisements, it talks about shall impose a fine of up to five hundred dollars per day for each state of advertiser sent in violation of the section including advertisement um with uh and this is advertisement on short term rental sites. Um so is it one fine? Regardless of how many sites I might be listed on or some um a fine per site. I just, whichever way it is, I just think it has to be clear.
Yeah, I like it. I can look at that. It's a fine per advertisement. So it's. But if they advertise it separately, then it's still fine for each of those advertisements. But they put ten properties on one advertisement as one advertisement.
Okay, and so those are my concerns at this point. But good job for you and Nicole.
So I have Donna, Bill and Jay all had their hands up. I'm going to go to Donna next.
Okay, um I have some concerns regarding the ordinance and property rights. I just don't understand what the difference is basically from uh people renting a unit. Do they have to report their tax to the town with what they're charging someone for, like say, second floor? And I don't know why that would have to be uh so intrusive to these people that are trying to make some extra money. They're already paying their taxes, but having said that, um I think everyone got a letter from uh Carol Gaimond. And I'd like to read it because I think a lot of it makes sense and maybe we could um make it not so. The other thing is it was hard to read what I had in front of me. It's anyway, um she reviewed the draft and the state of Rhode Island um has already passed legislation this month requiring that all short term rentals of thirty days or less be registered. Uh so do we need that in ours if it's already a state requirement? Uh do we even need that mentioned in our in our um ordinance or code?
So the 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 state registration is a little different than our registration. It's our registration has some more information as to like the contact information that, I mean, even the state does have those two, but it's just a little, it's part of the application process that we want to we want to make sure that it's both places, but it's not. Again, Donna, just so you understand, getting back to your property rights, it's my, it's it's my, it's been my legal opinion that if you are a homeowner in a residential zone, so you're living a plat, you have fifteen houses in your neighborhood. You bought that, you bought your house with the understanding that you were going to live in a neighborhood, right? Stable and whatnot. Uh if you, if if your neighbor now decides to move to California but wants to keep the house, but wants instead of renting out for six months or a year, he wants, he or she wants to rent it for a week at a time because it might be waterfront or something. You've just converted your house into a hotel, basically, in a residential neighborhood. So your neighbors now have to deal with new people every week, including having parties and perhaps or whatnot, new, you know, parking issues, whatever, everything we discussed. So that's that's the property right issue. So property rights work both ways, right? So if you, if you bought in a residential neighborhood, you expect it to be residential. You don't expect your neighbor to be changing every two weeks with a new renter coming in. So.
Right, um and then upon the sale of any property or changing of. And then upon the sale of any property or changing of any insurance provider, the insurance companies hire an inspector for any hazards or. Refuse of the exterior and photos of the exterior and interior are taken. The owners receive a letter if their insurer outlines concerns. Remedies must be followed up with further inspection or photos of remediation. So I guess what she's saying is some of the regulations in here. Should be the property owners and the insurers rather than us sending. Uh, everybody into the these houses. See, I I guess I want less rather than. Opinion though.
I get that. You have to also understand that if we don't have insurance, what do you do? You're not required to have homeowners insurance, right?
Well, that would have to be on the thing if you have insurance or not. The state of Rhode Island has DEM regulations in place for updating septic systems and Rhode Island Board of Health. As jurisdiction on wells and water quality. Homeowners who place their property for rental are aware of these requirements, especially if they live on the property. So do we have anything about septic in here? I don't think so.
Oh, we 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 set the occupancy, the the building official will set the occupancy once the inspection is completed.
Okay.
And that that relates back to the septic system. That was a Denise had the same concern.
Alright, uh, rather than mandating uh building department inspections, an initial smoke detector inspection. Certificate can be required by the fire department once an application is received. For an STR as the fire department also inspects for any visible hazard for the egress or. Ingress or egress. Due to property owners who are non-compliant, these regulations are consistently eroding private property rights. We should be mindful of the regulations already in place. Municipalities need to consider the benefits of these types of rentals for business communities who contribute and complement. This wonderful town. Alternatives are a lot. Are large hotels which do not contribute or complement a town like Tiverton. Anyway, that's from Carol. And I was just wondering if we could sweep through this and see if if there could be less regulation. The other thing is, I I've been against and don't understand the hundred dollars. Uh, that's being charged to people. They're already paying. Uh, I mean, our thing was is that we. We just want to know who has this the short-term rental. That was the the. The initial uh reason for this, and then it's turned into a hundred dollars and a hundred dollars per. I don't understand why it's a hundred dollars when if they're complying with everything and then you do know. Uh, who who the short-term renters are, and you do have in place that someone's going to step up to the plate. If the it's non-occupied, I don't understand what the hundred dollars is all about. Personally, I I don't get it, but um, I was just wondering if we could. Just do twenty-five dollars or fifty. I don't understand why it's a hundred dollars. I I don't get it, but um, one of the other things I I wanted to say was um. With the inspections. If the application is submitted, does the owner have to wait until the town has all these inspectors and inspections in place? And signed off before the rental can take place?
Before the before the special use permit can be granted, yes.
Well. How long is it gonna take? I mean, it takes it takes months for things regularly. Even for a shed or. I I don't see how that's workable and it seems unfair to me. Uh, there needs to be a way to move into this if you, if this is what you want to do. Move into this gracefully without making it so difficult that people now can't do an STR. Because it's all being done at once. And and there's nothing, there's nothing in the ordinance to say how that would happen. Or that if someone has to wait for so long and they missed a whole season. Something's very unfair with that, and I don't know uh that it's been discussed in a way that would be fair. Um, there's nothing, nothing anywhere that I can see. That could. Help these people that, just like they have a cutoff. With the planning board, if if you don't meet a certain date that they can. Do their STR and in the meantime can get there. I don't know what needs to be done. Something needs to be done. It this this doesn't seem right.
What, that they have to do inspections?
That the inspections could take a very long time, Denise, because you're using.
Inspections is to keep them, to keep the residents safe, Donna. I mean.
But but you can't use safety to keep people from trying to do something with their property because.
If it means that that somebody rents these homes. And if a fire has it and the alarms aren't working and they die.
Well, then that's on them with their insurance. They're in trouble with that. No, I I really. I think it's really unfair. We don't have enough inspectors to, all these people with what there's a hundred and fifty people that would have to. There's about a hundred and fifty.
My question is if we license this. We license a home to do this and none of the fire alarms are working and a fire breaks out. The occupants die, who we also can get sued. Is that not correct? Not that I want occupants to die, but Mike.
Yeah.
I I you know, it's, there's a lot of defense.
Mike, you keep going on mute. I don't know why.
I'm sorry, I don't know. Um. You know, we, you know. I I can't answer that question in the abstract like that. It's, you know, I I think of the station nightclub nightclub fire where there's, there are there are defenses to being sued by. From municipality unless you're grossly negligent, but and and in any event, um, you know, we. We require a home inspection when a house is sold, a fire inspection, if the house is sold with. With to make sure they have CO and 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 uh fire, fire. So having these separate inspections is not nothing out of the ordinary. I, there there could be an issue about how like, you know, how timely these inspections can happen, but I mean, we have to, we, that's part of the, one of the fees maybe to pay for. Uh, you know, to have extra people to do this kind of stuff, but at the end of the day, if you're willing to rent out your house on a weekly basis. Um. You know, you gotta, you gotta, there's a, there's a cost to that, and there's a cost to the town and there's a cost to the homeowner and and. And that's just what they're deciding to do. So we have an absolute right to regulate this and. Um, that's what we're trying to do. I'm only, you know, we're we're only reacting, if you recall, when this all came up is it. Kind it came up because of a concern about uh the library. Uh, being being a short-term rental and kind of opened up a camera work, so.
Well.
Well, Chief Rymos, I think wants to weigh in on my question. Is that true?
Um, I did not actually hear your.
Okay.
Question, but I I do, I would like to weigh in real quick. Um, so I. Had a conversation this afternoon with um the marshal, the fire marshal here in in town, Lieutenant Murphy. He made a couple of phone calls to the state. The only time that the that the towns, cities and towns have any authority with one. Through three family dwellings is for smoke detector inspections. Um. We were unable today, this afternoon, to get any. Advice from the state whether if if this does go through, if we're gonna have the authority to go in there. We do have the authority when there's a a transfer of, you know, when the house is sold. Uh, when the property is sold or something, but we do not have any authority to go into the uh one through three family dwelling. To do inspections.
Do you have jurisdiction to go into an N?
We do. We do.
They're converting this property to an N.
Correct.
So i- it's certainly appears that, you know, that's obviously your opinion. It certainly appears that it's um. Mike's. Uh, opinion also. Where I I wanted to hear from the state to see what their opinion was and and.
But. Think it's how it's presented, but that's.
Yeah, I also think, chief, that we're we're exercising our own local police, police, police powers, and this is a public safety issue, and I think that. Uh, we we inherently have the authority to, in by through ordinance, not just randomly, but through an order, a a a duly passed ordinance to. To allow you to go into these premises uh when someone is getting a benefit from it and act, you know. Exactly, u- using their property as basically a a whole, you know, a weekly hotel.
I do think it's a good idea to get the state's blessing. Uh, we go through this to make sure we understand exactly what our limitations are. Are, and we'll have some time as this goes with planning board to be reviewed.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing we're doing tonight is referring this to the planning board, by the way, so.
Right, talking to the marshal today, his his thought, you know, in a five-minute conversation that we had was. If we as a town want to adopt the an ordinance where that would allow us to go into these places to do the uh. The inspections. It might just have to go to the Board of Appeal and Review to make it law. To allow the town to make it law for us to do that. And if uh another example that we did here in town was the sister and. Um, ordinance. So, you know, ju- I just want to throw that out there. I'm I'm not an expert in this. I don't know, you know, it's just something that we. I was discussing today and I want to throw it out there.
Now, I applaud you for going through the Department of, you know, Fire Safety Board, and we will definitely try to get this weighed out, but. Newport's doing this. There must be a mechanism that they've done to get the state board to agree with what they do. Other communities are doing this as well, so we we need to figure it out, and we do have some time to get this done before it comes back to us, so. I I applaud you for doing that, though.
Very good, very good.
Again, the only thing we're doing is referring to the the planning board and if anyone has questions between now and then, we can, we can deal with it.
Yep.
The planning board's jurisdiction is limited to, you know, reviewing to make sure it's.
Uh, comp plan and all that.
Completely, you know, consistent with the comp plan and and things like that.
So who else had their hand up? Bill, did you?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Jay?
Uh, I just want everybody to keep in mind that these things really are no different than a motel. And there's all kinds of rules or regulations around motels. Uh, predominant among them is safety. And. Things like smoke detectors and CO detectors and fire extinguishers, the ingress and egress are. High up on the radar for those. Uh, installations, so. I think we ought to treat them the way they are being used. And as far as Carol Gaimond's letter goes, I'm not gonna go through it. I disagree with almost all of it. And let me go with that.
Donna, were you done? I'm sorry, we did interrupt you. Was there anything further?
Well, there was another uh letter that I wanted to go over and it was from um. A Nancy Papagiano. And um. One of the things she wanted to have mentioned, I don't know how this all got balled up or didn't get to us, but um. She says that also said importantly that my belief after the meeting was that the last meeting where people could talk about this. Was that if the town council differentiated owner occupied from non-owner occupied, the issues. And the non-commitment resolutions would be much, made much easier. So she said she never got a reply. So is it that simple that we need to have something like that in?
Well, it was my, it was my understanding that after the that public hearing that the town did, the 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 members of the council did not want to make a distinction between. Because if you recall, the initial draft had a owner occupied provision at, and I think you couldn't, you couldn't use it unless you occupied it. Uh, out of, I think you had to live there at least. Uh, two six, two hundred sixty-five days out of three hundred sixty-five or some, there was some number that I used. Uh, there was, there was a lot of pushback from that. So, but Mike, Michael, I think, I'm sorry, Donna, but I think from my memory with Nancy's correspondence. Because I've read everything that everybody has sent, including Carol's letter, and I appreciate that letter, Carol. I know you were in the audience earlier anyway. Was not requiring owner occupancy, but could we have a differentiated. Um, process and or rate for. An owner occupied versus somebody that just buys a home for the purpose, in Tiverton, just for the purpose of doing STR. And that, if we can do that, from my perspective, that would probably address my concern about. One person or one company coming in and grabbing up a bunch of places. Because it may limit more, so I don't know if we can legally do that. If we can, I would suggest we look at that, and that's why. I'm still not believing that we're ready for this to go to the planning board. I think there. A couple pieces in here that I'd like to see ironed. Um, but while I have the floor also, whenever we do send it to the planning board, I am. Very hopeful that they will give us a very thorough report back based on all of the items in the statute that they. Are expected to report back to us on um and more than. Uh, a statement that it does or does not fit into the conference of plan because I'd have to go back and look. I haven't. Shame on me, but I doubt very much there's any reference at all in the conference of plan to short-term rentals.
It's true. I believe that's true.
Alright.
Can I make, can I mention one other thing? Um, it was brought to my attention today that Newport. Is in the process of redoing their entire short-term rental because of a this, a tragedy that happened. And and there was a lot of reasons why it happened. They they're trying to fix it.
Um, alright, so. What would you like to do, council? Do you want to?
Or have a workshop?
Whatever. Yeah, we could have a workshop. Mike, you wanna, would that make?
Yeah, I I don't, I don't think it's ready for the planning board yet. We. Not only am I kind of arguing for things when fees and different things, I think we need to feel comfortable with it before we send it anyway, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, so do you want to schedule a workshop?
I'm fine with that.
It's like you're saying yes, Phil, is that okay with you?
Yes, that's, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Do you want to schedule that now?
Hi, um, just to remind you that the, there is a fifth Monday in January, January thirty-first. So you could do a workshop on that date. Um, that's the the date that's set aside for a workshop.
So moved.
The only thing with that date is I'm on call. But only till six-thirty, so I might be a little late.
Are you comfortable with that, though?
Yeah. Yep. I just want you to know if I know, if I'm not right there.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll have a workshop then. Okay. Alright, um, discussion possible vote to approve resolution establishing the Tiverton Solo Ordinance. Advisory Committee and to advertise for general members. You have the resolution in front of you. Any questions? Any comments? Any? Yes, Mike?
Um, and I apologize, Michael, I was gonna send you something this morning and I got sidetracked. Biggest question is, should this be designated as a council subcommittee?
Instead of an advisory committee because of what we did last time? Mike?
No, I I think, I mean, I, you you have the right to establish committees under the, under the ordinance. Uh, the issue with the issue with the other problem was you had members on it who were not town residents, but these are all the, and not electors of the town. This would, this would be all town residents.
Does the words at all doing it the way it's written restrict us from having council members, planning board members, or EDC members?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
At all, the way it's written restrict us from having council member, EDC members, planning board members in 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 regard to the chart.
Nothing, there's no, no, as long as they're all electors of the town.
Okay. Uh, and I thought we had just, um, only because of the, as we've had with some. Public uh involvement. Um, now I think this will be a challenge. Should we, and this is more members, they up to four committee or members of the general public. That way, if we only get three, it doesn't hold us up from forward.
That'd probably, probably be a good idea.
And the intent, my intent is to get four.
Yeah.
And again, I I think it, you know, if our phone books and put a, you know, flung through the phone book and. Put our finger down, we'll find four easily, but um.
I think it's gonna be four that's gonna want it.
Right, that's what I mean. Um, so. Point, maybe it's a moot point for this one, but um.
I mean, if you don't have, if you don't, if your point, if you don't have four, you're gonna have, it'll be.
You'll have three, you'll just have a vacancy, that's all, it's.
This doesn't require us to have four?
No.
Okay.
And so if we got zero, we could still have a quorum.
Yeah.
Provide other members, okay.
Quorum is determined by those who are actually appointed.
Um, and then the third whereas. Is, this is a minor, maybe minor, should governing be permitting instead zoning ordinance permitting the placement or? Now, okay, nevermind. Scratch that thought. And I'm, I, again, more question, um, should we include that this committee shall seek input from DEM? Uh, and I can't remember the actual name of it, but the State Energy Office. Gross Market Island. And um, a solar, uh, solar industry, industry trade association, or if there is one, not a company. Uh, you know, they're out for their own.
But I think it's, I mean, you can, you can specify if you want to, but I would hope that a co- a committee would do that, you know. But it's up to you.
It's within our ability to seek assistance.
Right. I just know that. In the public hearing or the public discussion that we had. Folks were very clear of wanting. All of those included, they didn't mention the solar industry, all of the solar industry companies certainly spoke to that, but. They did mention, I think, all of those other ones. So that's all, but it's, I mean, either way, I can go forward with this.
Any other comments? Like to entertain a motion?
Jay, you should have it, it was your.
Oh, okay, I, I'll make a motion that we uh. Approve a resolution establishing the Tivon Solar Ordinance. And we're gonna call it the Advisory Subcommittee.
Advisory.
Stick with advisory and to advertise for general public members. As many as four.
Um. Do I have a second?
Second.
Which has been made by Council Edwards. Second by Council Vieira, all those in favor, Council Vieira?
Yes.
Council Burke?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Okay. Town administrative discussion and possible vote on preliminary budget due to budget. Committee by January fifteenth.
So I provided everybody a spreadsheet today, it's about seventeen pages, um. It's a very, very preliminary budget, as a matter of fact, there are things in here that. I did the town clerk and board canvases, town referendum. You know, I didn't even talk to Joan about it yet, so they, you know, they're obviously gonna need to be adjustments on this budget. There are, you know. The council still needs to weigh in as to where you're gonna be with the budget. But by the charter, we have to get something to the budget committee by the fifteenth. Um, this is a good start, it's, uh, but obviously it is a work in progress. We'll let the budget committee know that as well. It's just one person's view as to the initial snapshot. But there'd be a lot of work going through this. There is no capital in here other than the fire truck, um, and that can still be discussed as well. Uh, as we go through the process, uh, so it's just a very initial stab at trying to get this done. I tried to get it well within four percent, um, for the town side. This is what it is, so I just need some permission to move forward to get something to the budget commission, the school committee will be voting tomorrow night. For their very initial one as well. Uh, I'll adopt that with this and I'm, I'm sure they're gonna be within a law like they were last year as far as what they're required to do. And we'll get something as least as a working document to the budget committee. And then we can start the process of having some workshops.
Uh, Denise, can I? I forgot to mention something here. On the Tivon Solar Ordinance Committee. We had said at our meeting. That we would deliver a product either by the end of April, the last meeting in April.
Yes.
But we pretty much lost January.
Yeah, I know.
So we still want to stick with that or move it a little bit?
Well, I think we can talk about that later once you get together and your committee sees how much time they need.
Okay.
How's that?
It just occurred to me when I, I said, oh, wait a minute.
Alright, so Chris, I did look at it, um, but I mean, really quickly, but um. I think we should just send it to the budget committee like we do every year and then have budget workshops and tweak it.
No, I agree, it's, but it's, you know, I tried not to get outrageous with it. You'll see there is a big number on the council contingency, but there are three unions that are.
I know, but, yeah, yeah.
There's a bigger issue that we have to deal with fire department, so it is what it is, but. And ultimately, that may not be anywhere near what the number is when we get down to what is, what we do. But it, it needed to be a basic starting point somewhere, so.
And potential raises are in there too, right?
That's under council contingency.
Yeah.
There are a couple of minor, uh, uh, the ones that are in the budgets, ones that you've approved already. Like some of the directors that we've already approved, so I did start their new base year based on what we've already approved.
Yes, I saw that.
Okay.
Alright. Any questions?
So is it okay to move, is it okay to move it on to the budget committee?
Yes, we're gonna have a vote, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we send a preliminary budget. Uh, to the budget committee. By January fifteenth.
Thank you.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor, Council Vieira?
Yes.
Uh, Council Burke?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Alright, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed executive session pursuant to forty-two dash forty-six five eight five. Discussion and consideration. Of publicly held property Tim industrial park where in advanced public information would be detrimental to the interest of the pu- public. Letter of intent to purchase.
So moved.
Motion's been made in second, it, Council Vieira?
Yes.
Council Burke?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, we're now in executive session.